Good evening. And I'd like to welcome everyone to the board meeting. This, today is Wednesday, November 1st, 2017. The time is 7 o'clock. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Twinsburg Board of Education to order. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mr. Solura?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felver?
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't think that there are any changes to the agenda. Okay, so we will move on to the communications area in the president's report. Good evening and welcome, families and staff of Samuel Bissell and RB Chamberlain Middle School, administrative staff, and other residents of the Twinsburg community. I am Mark Curtis, and it is my privilege to be your board president. The first, the first report cards have gone out and our fall sports are drawing to a close. And I trust that our kids had a bountiful Halloween, complete with costumes, carved pumpkins, and sugar highs. While we've enjoyed favorable weather, it's wishful thinking that we would expect it to last much longer, so now we're busy raking leaves and getting our winter wear in anticipation of that dreaded four-letter word: snow. I said it. That's okay. We'll hear from our treasurer, Mr. Aho, about the district's five-year forecast as required at this time of the year. This forecast is a mechanism allowing us to look back at our expenditures and revenues and project these same things moving forward. We have always taken a very conservative approach traditionally to allow for unforeseen circumstances that may impact the district and any decisions that we make. And we've also managed to implement many initiatives financially while continuing to use the Operational Change Plan for strategic planning. I have also continued to report out on progress of my work with State Representative Christina Rogner on getting House Bill 87 signed into law. Recall that this piece, this is a piece of legislation that is designed to allow districts to receive funds originally diverted to charter schools in the event a charter school has a finding of recovery by the Ohio Department of Education or the Auditor of State. I recently received word of progress on the bill that is to receive a third hearing this morning. It actually received a third hearing this morning in the House Government and Accountability Oversight Committee where I also previously provided proponent testimony. As this is a last hurdle that we have in the state, in the state House of Representatives, our goal is to get this passed out of committee and onto the Senate for further consideration. As always, I will continue to keep the community abreast as the status changes. Finally, as I mentioned in my president's report two weeks ago, it has been the board's longstanding practice not to comment on, not to, not to comment in public concerning pending investigations involving school district personnel. Recently, a complaint was filed involving the superintendent, which resulted in an investigation. That investigation is now concluded, and I have a few remarks on the matter. To begin, the investigation arose out of a complaint I received October 11th, 2017. The complaining party alleged that the superintendent and/or board, and, I'm sorry, excuse me, and/or members of her administration, or of her administrative team had engaged in religious discrimination. The allegations arose in the context of another investigation the superintendent was conducting at the board's direction. In keeping with our commitment to be impartial, the board asked an attorney who has not previously, who has not previously worked for the district to complete an independent investigation. That attorney was provided broad authority and discretion to investigate the claim of religious discrimination in accordance with board policies. At the conclusion of the investigation, the attorney prepared a comprehensive report that was submitted to myself and the Board of Education on October 26th, 2017. The investigative report concludes that there was no evidence of religious discrimination by either the superintendent or members of the administrative team. In addition, the allegations were proven to be false and without merit. Specifically, it was found that the superintendent's actions were done with the intent of ensuring the district's compliance with the First Amendment and board administrative guidelines on that topic. As such, these actions are in keeping with our overall responsibilities, with her overall responsibilities as superintendent of this school district. And as a result of this conclusion, we consider the case closed. I would like to thank the superintendent and her administrative team for their cooperation during this process. This concludes my president's report, and I will now turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Curtis. Good evening, Board of Education, community members. Thank you for joining us this evening. We sure have packed house and lots of students to celebrate tonight. So before we get to that, we have some important announcements to make. First of all, Board of Education, this coming Saturday is a pretty important event, or date, rather, for two of our Twinsburg High School cross-country athletes, Emily O'Connor and Ryan Atkins, are going to be competing in the OHSAA State Cross-Country Meet in Hebron this coming Saturday. So we are very proud of Coach Sarah Komet and our coaching staff of our cross-country team, as well as all of our student athletes, and in particular Emily and Ryan, and we wish those two Tigers all the very best this Saturday in Hebron as they represent our school districts in the state cross-country meet. Board of Education, as you know, we continue to stay close to the legislative action in Columbus. At the forefront of that legislative action is Senate Bill 216, which is being called the Ohio Public School Deregulation Act. Included in this bill is language regarding the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, educator licensure, professional development for certain gifted service providers, state achievement assessments, including the Ohio State Test and the Kindergarten Reading Assessment, known as the KRA, the third grade reading guarantee, college credit plus, student attendance issues, preschool education, and school mandated reports. I think they forgot the kitchen sink, but just about everything else is in there. Each of the areas I just mentioned has implications for the manner in which our school district operates. Earlier today, Mrs. Farthing and Mr. Potter and I participated on a conference call with the Alliance Accountability Committee to share our feedback regarding these topics. We join with other educators from across the state in providing our state legislators with relevant information in the hope of providing guidance as they determine the direction of this important bill. I encourage our parents and residents to learn more about Senate Bill 216 and to offer your feedback to our state legislators. And I will continue to keep everyone updated as the bill moves along through the various channels down in Columbus. Board of Education, as I mentioned during the last board meeting, our district will host a parent meeting for the parents of this year's freshmen and sophomores to share details about our Chromebook rollout. The parent meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 29th, at 7 o'clock PM in the high school auditorium. I look forward to this evening's administrative report, which will include additional details about the Chromebook rollout at Twinsburg High School. We want to take a minute here to thank everyone who participated in last week's Fill the Bus donation drive for the Emergency Assistance Center. Thanks to your generosity, our school district donated 1,716 pounds of non-perishable food items. Special thanks to head varsity football coach Mike Bell, who's here this evening, and our Tiger football team, along with our friends in transportation for taking the donation to the Emergency Assistance Center last Saturday morning, unloading the donations and weighing them too for our friends over at the Emergency Assistance Center. It was a great community event. And we also want to thank our friends over in Nardonia, who also had a similar drive and really helped fill those pantry shelves over at the Emergency Assistance Center. A reminder that our students do not have school next Tuesday, November 7th, as it is a professional development day here in the district for our staff members, and it's also election day, and I encourage everyone to exercise your right to vote, as this is a very important election here in our community. Board of Education, this evening, we have three administrative reports to share with you. As Mr. Curtis already mentioned, Mr. Aho will be updating everyone with regard to the district's five-year forecast. The second report will be provided by our Director of Pupil Services, Mrs. Denise Trapphegan, along with our Beechbrook social worker staff, and their presentation will be about our PBIS initiative, along with our Beechbrook school-based program overview for last year, as well as our program initiatives for this year. And bringing up the end of that will be our Director of Curriculum, Jennifer Farthing, and our Supervisor of Innovative Programs, Mrs. Beth Mariola, who will present to you important information regarding our Chromebook rollout at Twinsburg High School, which is scheduled for this coming January. So we have a lot of information on the agenda tonight, and before we get to all those reports, we want to celebrate some outstanding Tigers. So I'd like to ask Mrs. Misty Johnson from Samuel Bissell Elementary School to please come forward, so we can recognize some outstanding students. And I think Mr. Solura's going to help out here tonight as well. So the students of the Month Program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognize outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set these students apart from their peers. We would like to proudly acknowledge the positive accomplishments of the following students. So we're going to begin with our second grade children. I know Mrs. Johnson could hardly wait to give you all hugs. And when you come up to meet us up here, please shake hands with Mr. Solura, who has a pen for you, and greet your principal, and she's going to give you a certificate. And then if you could please hold your certificate in front of the table until all the boys and girls from your school are recognized, that would be outstanding. Okay, so first we have second grader Olivia Bassel from Mrs. Ziska's class. Next is Olivia Dietrich from Miss Conrad's class. Then we have Brianna Eberly from Miss King's class. Next up is Peyton Herring from Mrs. Springer's class. Our next Tiger is Riley Johnson from Miss Conrad's class. And finally, Ryan Leskovic from Miss King's class. Moving on up to our big kids, our third graders, Kyra Blaney from Mrs. Watson's class. And then we have John Blust from Mrs. Finn's class. Next is Rashpri Grual from Mrs. Cardeman's class. And then Caitlin Nowak from Miss Babcock's class. Next we have Piper Dalit from Mrs. Finn's class. And next, Brianna Robinson from Mrs. Kinsella's class. Next is Zachary Shobert from Miss Babcock's class. And finally, last but certainly not least, is Anthony Smith from Mrs. Kinsella's class. Boys and girls, why don't you hold your certificates right in front of your stomachs and give your moms and dads your very, very best Tiger smile, because I know they want to put this in your memory books, no doubt, a photo of all of you. One more round of applause for these outstanding students of the month.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. I'm so proud of our second and third graders. They have done such an excellent job since the start of the school year. If we could recognize all 600 of them at one time, I would do that. But we have our year to continue to celebrate, so, so excited about that. We do have two staff members. Along with celebrating our students, we celebrate our staff at Samuel Bissell. And our first staff member we're celebrating this evening is Mrs. Ziska. And Mrs. Ziska is one of our second grade teachers. She was nominated by Mrs. Muller, one of our staff members, and I would just like to share with you what was written. "In the beginning of the year, teachers are eager to establish their classroom community and begin to set the tone for the school year. Each year, challenges may arise that can challenge us as teachers and students. Mrs. Ziska has met those challenges and has risen to the occasion. Her calm, positive attitude allows her to focus and address all concerns. Her students benefit from her willingness to try new things that will benefit the entire class. She seeks other colleagues for new ideas and strategies to implement in her classroom. She remains optimistic and knows her class will succeed. Her high expectations for her students' behavior and academics benefits their views on learning and success. She continues to implement new ideas as her classroom continues to follow her lead. She is a wonderful role model for her students and colleagues." These are the many reasons that I would like to nominate Mrs. Ziska for Staff of the Month, again written by Mrs. Muller. Smile, Mrs. Ziska. And our second nominee is Mrs. Zabo. I would like to share with you what was written about Mrs. Zabo. "Mrs. Zabo is such an asset to have in the classroom. She keeps a very busy schedule," that is true, "as she moves from room to room throughout the day. As she comes into my room several times each week, I appreciate that she always jumps right into any lesson I'm teaching and assists all students as needed. Mrs. Zabo always seems to have a way of knowing what needs to be accomplished, and she gets it done without me having to say a word. The students and I really enjoy her personality and her sense of humor. She makes learning fun for the kids while still keeping them on task and on track, helping them to achieve their goals. My students and I are lucky to get to work, to get to work with her this year," written by Mrs. Watson. Congratulations, Mrs. Watson. And this is our Staff of the Month. I'm so proud of them as well. Thank you, Mrs. Ziska and Mrs. Zabo. So before we move on to some exciting things, and I'm going to tell you that in a second, I want to share two things with you really quickly. So every year, our students set a goal. When we do the Read-A-Thon, they always set a goal for the number of minutes read and the number, or the amount of money they will raise for the Read-A-Thon. And if they meet those goals, then of course, I have to dance on the roof. So this year, once again, my wonderful students have met their goals. So they read over 90,000 minutes, and they raised over $11,600, $600-plus dollars for this school year. So let's give a round of applause to Bissell. So thank you to all of our families, because without you, obviously, that could not be done. And yes, I will be dancing on the roof. We do have a challenge with the weather, but I will be on the roof sometime real soon. I'm planning it, students, I'll unveil that on Friday. But I am planning something very special for you on the roof, and it's coming soon. The second thing I want to share with you is today, and thank you to our maintenance department, Mike and Tim, it was very cold outside. They came running over to Bissell to help out. We know that 25 years ago, there was a time capsule that was buried in our courtyard. And so it's time to unveil it. They came over and they were digging and on their knees and digging and digging, and sure enough, they were able to get it out. Now, I did tweet that out, I'm sorry, students, you won't know until Friday, but the world already knows what we were able to find. So it's so exciting at Bissell to see what students were doing 25 years ago, and when the students see it on Friday, they'll be very excited to say, "What is that? What, what did you use that for?" So it's going to be very interesting Friday morning. Now, without further ado, we have two teachers, two third-grade teachers, that will be coming up and sharing with you about how they make learning fun. So at this time, Miss Babcock and Mrs. Engler, if you would come forward.
All right, so, Miss Babcock and I are, kind of went together on something that we, we really believe that our kids should have fun and come in with a positive attitude every day. It really makes a difference. So I'm not going to talk much, because it's been a long night, but our kids are ready to sing a song for you that they start the day with. It's a good way to start the day, because it's very positive. So if we could have Miss Babcock's kids and my kids come up? You guys are in for a treat. So they started learning the song with music, but they're doing it a cappella right now. Are we ready, guys? Let's do a countdown. On three. Three, two, one.
Walk in the classroom, I'm a teacher, you can't speak. Big big hat on, and you know I'm learning quickly, yay, hey, hey. Okay, okay, let's get ready to learn. It's gonna be a good day, it's gonna be a good day, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good day. Now slide, yeah, learning's all we got, ay, where's my, ay, where's my, ay. Everyone on your feet, ay, everyone on your feet, ay, everyone on your feet, ay, everyone on your feet, ay. Come on, do your dance, do your dance, do your dance, ay. You smart, you your teacher's pet, ay.
Before we knew that it was going to be this crowded, we asked our kids if they'd like to share something about what we do. So, Miss Babcock, do you want to start, or do you want?
Sure.
Okay.
I would like to start.
One of the reasons why I think our class is fun, that not many other classes do, is because we aren't just doing math with the whole class all at once. We do math centers, where we go on Google classrooms, and we do it with a partner.
I think Miss Babcock's classroom is fun, because when we do ring rings, our class chants our names, and we also do drum rolls, and we do things like woo, and lightning news too.
We want to do a roller coaster move. Okay, are you ready? So three, two, one.
Well, another reason why our class, like, is like not like any other class, it's really fun, because we have a super approver's role. It's like a video game. So you're down at one level. It's a video game. And then, when you get 10 stars, like a level, you move up a level. So then, you move up, and then to legend, if you move up to legend, my teacher, Miss Babcock, hangs your picture on a wall, on a wall forever, like forever.
So our class took a little different approach. We wanted to show that we don't just do paper pencil worksheets, so we do things a little bit differently, so everybody can understand what we're doing.
So what we're doing today is the distributive property. This is how we do the distributive property of, with an array. So, so the fact is eight times six. So we break apart the eight into six and three, no, six and, six and, six and five, and then, and then, we make two smaller arrays from the larger array, three rows of six and five rows of six. So what you would do, you would do the three times six and five times six. So you add them together by, you make the sum of eight times, I mean, three times six and five times six. So five times six equals 30, and three times six equals 18. So 18 plus 30 equals 48. So the answer to the multiplication problem, eight times six is 48.
In third grade, we're learning the distributive property of multiplication using mouse ears. First, you cross out one of the factors. We crossed out the eight and crossed it out. Then we put mouse ears on it, putting two numbers that equals that crossed out number. And we did five plus three, which equals eight. Then at the bottom, we did the number that's not crossed out, which is nine, then times one of the numbers that equals eight, which was nine times five plus nine times three. And we put nine times five, which is 45. Then we added nine times three, which is 27, and then, which equals 72. So nine times eight equals 72.
In class, we did an escape classroom using context clues with a small group. We had to use a lock with combinations and solve puzzles to open it.
During escape, during escaping, we had to complete three tasks. When we completed, we earned a escape key, then to escape homework, we also got mini mag to find out.
We had to do some worksheets with our group.
This is how we escaped the classroom and learned about context clues.
This is a fun way to learn about context clues.
So I just want to say, I know that's a long way, you're probably thinking that's a long way to do multiplication, but it really makes them see what nine times eight is. So I just want you to see that we're also doing a fun way to memorize the facts. You guys ready? Which one are we doing? Okay, ready, go.
Eight and six were running late. Eight and six is 48.
Remember, we're all doing the answer.
Nine and eight lost a shoe. Nine times eight is 72.
Thank you for everybody's patience, too, as we know. But these kids are so excited, and they're going to remember this tomorrow morning.
Oh, absolutely. And I tell you, they, this is how they make learning fun each and every day. And I tell you, they, this is how they make learning fun each and every day. I know when you looked at some of those papers, you were like, "I didn't learn math like that." But guess what? You can ask one of the students to teach you how to do math a different way. So, great job, I'm so proud of you, third graders, you're awesome.
Thank you, boys and girls. Why don't you just stay right there one second in case any parents want one last photo of the whole group together. Of course, Mrs. Johnson wants a photo too. One more round of applause for Mrs. Engler and Ms. Babcock. Now, we'd like to ask Mr. Reese to come forward because we have some outstanding students of the month from RB Chamberlain Middle School. Good evening, Mr. Reese.
Alright, good evening, everyone. First of all, to the students and staff at Bissell. Mrs. Johnson, you are such a great colleague and a great resource for the district. So, please be careful on the roof. The future of RBC seniors is bright, a very talented group. And a couple of you have a math opening next year, please apply. And to the Bissell teachers, keep doing what you're doing. I wish my children would have had you in class. That is just some great, great strategies that you are teaching those students. Alright, first of all, we want to start with the Chamberlain Students of the Month. Students receiving the honor of Student of the Month are recognized for meeting all six of the criteria that I will be reading. Each of these students has met all of the criteria in their classes as grade-level teams decide upon two boys and two girls to be selected each month from each grade. The criteria are, they show respect and consideration for others. They show enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities. They exert a positive influence on classmates. They exhibit leadership characteristics. Exhibit patriotism and democratic principles. And they show responsibility. So, our Students of the Month for the month of October, in seventh grade, we have Teagan Bell. Caleb Salo. Lauren Glassman. Jack Sigidi. And our eighth-grade students, Carter Luxo. Brad Jotzing. And Ed Getz. And Marcus Campos. Mrs. Moore said she had perfect attendance. I don't think I've ever had perfect attendance. But well, thank, thank you for coming out, everyone. We'll let our parents take some pictures. Alright, thank you. One more round of applause for our students of the month. A couple of highlights, uh, school board and community from Chamberlain since we last met. We've had two theme weeks over the last month. The first was our Say Something Week, which is a focus on school safety. I always say, the most important thing we do is keep our kids safe. Education is second. And so, we wrap a whole week around the theme of keeping kids safe, including having Officer Greg and Officer Ron do assemblies with the students. Our teachers do classroom lessons. Uh, we have a school-wide safety drill. And then, we have a culminating event with our guides, counselor to presenting to the classes on, uh, school safety and how to keep our school safe. So, we're very proud of all the activities we planned for the week, decorated the school. And then, we followed that up with our Red Ribbon Week, which is a kickoff to really a very comprehensive drug and alcohol prevention program we do. Uh, so, Red Ribbon Week, we have spirit days and the kids dress up different days. We start with red, wearing red, of course, for Red Ribbon Week. Uh, the kids' favorite day and the biggest participation is pajama day when we put drugs to rest. And they try to participate and they really learn better that way. And every day is New Pajama Day. So, and that follows now into our, our, our real meat of our programming. Uh, this week starts our Too Good For Drugs program. And that is a research-based intervention program that is completely funded through ADM. All the materials, the presenters, uh, students have curriculum in seventh grade and eighth grade. And we get that out of our health classes, so that's going to be starting up. We had our second Guiding Good Choices Night, and that's for parents. And I was very pleased to see, uh, during the second night, we had a bigger turnout than we did the first night. So, not only did most, everyone came back, uh, they must have told some friends and they showed up. So, those are each of them. You don't have to go to all of them. Uh, the next one's at the end of this month. It'll be communicated, that one, the students actually sit with the parents during, uh, the presentation. I believe it's November 27th. Go check the district calendar for our Guiding Good Choices Night. It's been part of our alcohol and drug prevention, being comprehensive and bringing the families involved. And you do get free dinner with that, so, um, please mark your calendars. And, um, finally, uh, you know, as of the nine weeks, it's great, less than 1% of any student at RBC will ever be eligible. We, we have just so many resources to help kids and make sure they don't fall through the cracks. And so, we're very, very proud of our students' achievement during the first nine weeks and looking forward to, to carry that on moving forward. So, thank you for all of your support.
There's always some great things happening at our middle school. Thank you, Mr. Reese, and our boys and girls from RB Chamberlain Middle School. Uh, Mr. Curtis, if I could, Mrs. Johnson has one tiger she needs to still recognize. So, come on up, let's talk about this outstanding tiger tonight.
This is Zachary, Zachary Schobert. He is one of our Students of the Month and he was not able to come up when his name was announced. So, we wanted to make sure that he was able to come up and get his certificate. And Mr. Soler is going to come shake his hand. So, we want to react everything, um, because he is deserving of it and he did such a wonderful job and he is recognized as well tonight. So, so very proud of him as well. And, um, where's your microphone? There she is. Did you want to take a picture? Oh, right. Okay, come on over so they can see you. Nice mouth, cheese pizza on Friday.
Can we give a round of applause for Zachary? Thank you, Mr. Schobert. Congratulations. Mr. Curtis, that concludes our superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Soler, you're slipping, man.
I know. I gave him a pinwheel first.
So, uh, uh, this will be the time, uh, we have, uh, students and parents, uh, who were here for Student of the Month that if you would like to be excused, uh, perhaps, uh, there's a big game going on this evening, uh, the World Series, uh, Game Seven. Or there might be other things that you might want to do with respect to homework and so forth and so on. Now would be the time to excuse yourself before we commence with, with the rest of our, um, with the rest of our meeting. Thank you so much for attending our board meeting this evening. Okay, um, we're going to commence with the rest of our meeting. Next on, uh, under communications, as committee reports, do we have anyone who will be reporting out for committees?
Finance Committee met, uh, October 23rd. Uh, we discussed, uh, multiple topics, including, uh, Chromebook Initiative rollout, which, uh, Mrs. Mariola will be expanding on, uh, as well tonight. Uh, building use, uh, fee schedule, uh, five-year forecast, which, uh, Mr. Aho will be, uh, reporting on. Uh, some permanent improvement projects and the permanent improvement fund, as well as the, um, first, um, look at the new revenue sharing agreement and how, um, how that looked for his payments from last year.
Okay, anything else, uh, any other committee reports? Okay, then I'll turn it over again to, uh, administrative, uh, reports.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. We actually have three administrative reports this evening. The first is, uh, going to be presented by our treasurer, Mr. Aho, and he will be providing an update regarding our district's five-year forecast. Good evening, Marty.
Thank you. Um, the five-year forecast is something that we have to do every year. Um, it's required by the, the ODE. Um, we have to do it in the fall and then we do an update, uh, in April, May. One of the things, if you go on ODE's website and look at, you know, what is the, the forecast purpose and objectives, um, they list them out and they kind of go through how, to read a forecast, you know, what, what to look for. But some of the main points of, of doing the five-year forecast is, is to engage, um, local boards and communities on long-range planning. So, you kind of get to look at the numbers, um, you know, and, and basically, it's kind of a roadmap to where, where the district's going to be going. Another big, important part of the, the forecast for the state of Ohio, um, Department of Education and the Auditor State, they use that forecast then to identify districts that might be having some financial problems. Um, you know, they want to make sure that districts don't wind up, you know, without money. Every public entity has to, you know, have, have dollars to operate. The only one that can operate without dollars is the federal government and they just borrow. Uh, everybody else has to have a balanced budget, um, moving forward every year. So, when you hear politicians say they balance the budget, well, they have to by law. And then, the last one, it, it basically serves, um, it's, it's kind of a, a barometer or whatever. It, it gives, um, a basis for determining the solvency of the district, the ability to sign a 412 certificate. Basically, a 412 certificate is, um, a certificate that says we have the funds moving forward, um, to pay for, um, like negotiated contracts or any kind of, uh, contract that might extend past a year or so. And those two kind of go in hand in hand. You can see two and three go hand in hand. Um, so, really, when they did the forecast and the purpose of it really was for the state to, to kind of monitor and a little bit of oversight of school districts and then, you know, other entities that do the forecasting. Um, one thing to note, uh, for Twinsburg, um, you know, we, we've kind of, these are actual numbers and this, this line is, is an actual line, um, you know, from 2007, we've been pretty flat-funded over those, over that timeframe. Um, you know, the increase in revenue has only been, uh, $288,000. You know, so, we have been living within our means. Oh, back one. One of the things that has been a real challenge for us, and you've heard us talking about this ever, and I don't know how long we've been talking about it, since, you know, Mr. Stuber was on the board and probably before that, is, is the phase out of the tangible personal property tax and the cat tax reimbursements. Um, you know, the base year for the, the tangible personal property tax was 2004 and in that year, we received, um, $9.8 million. Um, it peaked in 2007 up to $13 million. Um, it was kind of an, you know, with the tangible tax, if, if a business grew, they would have a larger tangible tax and then, you know, that would, that would be reflected on those, um, on their tangible tax payments. Um, in 2010, that was the year that Chrysler was closing and that, that was kind of a true-up for them, so that's kind of why the bump up in 2010. But you can see the general, you know, slope of that line is going down. So, you know, just going from, um, the base year of, of the $9.8 million, you can see that it's been reduced by, um, like $5.2 million. That's, you know, basically, the state's redirected. They, they've, you know, the cat, the tangible personal tax is all gone. And so, it's this cat tax reimbursement and they've been holding back on that and reducing that over time. Um, so, they've basically taken over half of that and, and the school districts don't see it. You know, and we're one of the districts, you know, Bedford, Solon, there's a lot of other districts around that had large, uh, industrial base, you know, in their community. Um, you know, all that tax money is going away. Um, something we've been doing over the, you know, the last several years, you know, we've known this tangible personal property tax is going to be a problem. So, um, several years ago, um, to cut expenditures, um, we had the operational change plan. They cut, um, $2.6 million in salaries and benefits from the budget. Um, so, we were able to trim there, um, kind of, you know, looking at our expenditures and how to make some cuts there, operating lean as we can. Um, you know, and then also too, on the other side, um, you know, the expenditure side, on the revenue side, voters approved a levy to help us, you know, to stay even. Um, so, that line basically stays flat, you know, because of voter approval, um, as the state redirects those dollars, you know, down to Columbus. One of the things that we take a lot of pride in here is, is our per pupil expenditures. Um, you can see there, it's, it's $10,000, $10,672. Um, this is off the CUP report, which is a, how Department of Education report. Um, you can actually go on their website and see this report and basically do it for any district. Here's how we compare to our neighbors and state average. We're, you know, below the state average and we're below similar districts and below our neighbors. Um, you know, so, we really do work diligently at keeping the costs of educating students down, um, you know, and also weighing that, you know, desire to keep the cost down with, with trying to maintain, you know, great programming. Um, so, it's, it's a balancing act. Um, you know, and we, we weigh those, those pros and cons all the time. And physically, you're 17, this is kind of a pie chart of the expenditures. Um, we're service industry, you know. You saw all these teachers up here tonight, um, staff, bus drivers, you know, that's really what we are. We're all about, you know, people, you know, providing services to other people, teaching kids, um, you know, in the buses, cleaning the buildings, um, you know, all those things that we do in schools. Um, you know, benefits is another piece of that. And so, 85% of the dollars that are sent to school districts, and this is in general, and you know, it's, it's pretty standard, um, you know, if you look at other school districts, they're all in the same, you know, range there. Um, you know, about 85% goes to, to salaries and benefits. Um, you know, so, then the rest of that, it goes to operations, purchase services, which would be school nurses, um, utilities, um, you know, any kind of fees and services we pay for. Uh, if you have an outside consultant come in and, and do some work with our, um, maybe with our special education department, yeah, you know, those kind of services are, are in this area. Um, you know, supplies are 2%, another's 2%. Um, so, you can see the majority of it goes for people and, and, um, you know, teachers. Um, you know, there are getting a lot of challenges that we're facing. Um, some of the things that kind of, you know, make, um, the five-year forecast kind of difficult. Um, one of the things, many years ago, the, the state enacted House Bill of 920, which caps the, the, uh, amount of revenues that a district can receive. So, as property values go up, whatever that levy was voted in as, it stays as. So as property values go up, whatever that levy was voted in, as it stays the same. It doesn't, it doesn't increase with reevaluations and inflation. So basically a levy, once it's voted in, it's kind of stays at that level for the most part. There are some small exceptions to every rule, but, you know, in general, they're going to stay, you know, right where they're, they're going to stay flat funded. Another things that makes it difficult for us to forecast is since 2010, there have been four different state funding models. There is SF3, the pass, the bridge, and the SFPR. And each time they would do these funding models, they would say, "Well, districts aren't going to get any more money, but you're not going to get any less money. So what would happen to us in Twinsburg is we'd be capped." And so they, you know, districts would receive more money and we should have been receiving more money because of the calculation, but then they say, "No, we can't do that" because they had to basically, the state has so much money and they basically worked back into it to figure out how to fund schools on a certain dollar amount, kind of like residual budgeting is what they call it. So there's, you know, the calculation was $9.2 million and out of that we received about $5.7. So there's a difference of $3.9 million that we don't receive. So if the funding model was working properly, that's, those are dollars that we would collect. Another thing is the House Bill 66, that is the one that goes back to the tangible personal property tax in 2004. At that time, the base year was $9.8 million. We've lost over half of that. And if you're just looking right there, the $9.8 million and the $3.9 above there, that's $13 million that, you know, because of legislators in Columbus that, you know, our district doesn't realize. And another thing that makes, you know, also difficult is, you know, since September 10th, or September 2010, there have been five different versions of the CAT tax, tangible personal property tax phase out. So they'll, they'll make one model, then they'll change their mind, and then they'll say that they're not going to do one thing and then they'll, you know, each time the legislature changes, they change how that model's working, you know, so that's, that's been a challenge too. You know, then this other thing was, you know, the casino revenue, which is helpful, you know, it's not something that's going to make a huge difference to funding of schools and public entities. So, you know, instead of putting up a spreadsheet here with lots of little lines and lots of little numbers in there and then trying to point out where all those numbers are and go, this is the ODE's website, you know, there's a link up there on top and it's also linked off the school district's treasurer's page. You can go there and look at the website, you can look at the five-year forecast for Twinsburg. The notes are also there, but you kind of have to go to a different spot on that website to find the notes to the forecast. The notes are very important. They basically kind of walk you through the forecast. You can see any school district up there, so you can compare Twinsburg to Solon, Nordonia to Aurora. You know, you can look around and see how our neighbors are doing compared to ours. And then basically, you know, we're all kind of, you know, in the same, you know, the same situations, not too much different, you know, as far as school districts go. So there, I wanted to spare everybody from trying to read those little numbers and let you, let you kind of go on the website and look at it yourself. This is my version of a visual model of school funding. It's kind of school funding, it's kind of like just as wrapped around as that tree there. That's the, that oak tree down in South Carolina. So that kind of, if I saw that, it kind of goes, that reminds me of what school funding is like. It keeps changing and moving and wraps around and you definitely got into the details and looked on the ODE website at the SFPR and the sheets and sheets of paper that fill what that funding model looks like and, you know, this student goes to this place and that student's over here and all the information they're tracking on students and these dollars go here and those dollars go there and some dollars are funded out of the cap and some are funded under the cap and then there's a calculation for some cap funding and it's just as crazy as what that tree looks like. So that's my visualization of the school funding model. So that's it for the five-year forecast.
Thanks, Marty. Can you, now, I know that the superintendent has testified at great length and done a lot of work around, you know, working with the legislature and testifying, you know, to see if we can make, get some movement on the phase out of the tangible personal property tax as well as the CAT tax. What I'm, you know, based on some of the work that I'm doing around charter schools and the effect that charter schools have on the funding that we receive, can you expand a little bit on the differentiation of what we receive in foundation dollars as opposed to what leaves our coffers when students choose to go to charter schools?
Sure. Let me see. Actually, the other day when I was doing the five-year forecast, I did kind of look at all that and basically printed off a sheet of the SFPR. And on there, there's like three different classes of kids that go, there's the charters kids that go out, and when a kid goes to a charter, the state deducts on average $6,808. Well, that's compared to what we receive, you know, after that funding model I was telling you about where they capped us and capped us and capped us, we only received $1,412. So basically, the money we receive for eight students is what they take for one student when they go to a charter. That's, you know, but on one thing with Twinsburg though, is not a lot of kids go to charter schools, which is, which is a fortunate thing. Some schools have huge numbers or larger numbers. We do have some kids going. We lose about $200,000 a year to charters, you know, and for the most part, you know, they're, I think you get a better education in Twinsburg and...
I would agree.
Can I make a comment based on a couple of years of finance committee? People always ask, "Have you talked to legislators? Have you talked to legislators?" This board, boards before us have talked to legislators and, you know, Mr. Aho, you can agree or disagree, but you can't fund a district on what they may or may not do. So that's why the operational change plan, the levies, because at every turn, they take the money away and we don't know if it's ever going to come back. There's always that last ditch effort, "Well, maybe they're going to put an appeal on," and it fails. So if you, if you follow school funding at all, you know, by the time a levy's passed, you don't see that money for, what is it, six months or a year? Till you even get that money received and you can't plan a district and funding based on that. So, you know, for those that are wondering, "Why don't you talk to legislators?" Well, we have, and many boards and many districts in our same position have over many years and you just can't plan based on whether they're ever going to change their minds. Do you agree?
Yeah, it's true. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aho. Always interesting.
Thank you.
Our second MSRev report this evening, Board of Education, is actually an update about our programs that are under the umbrella of our Director of Pupil Services, that is Mrs. Denise Trapphegan, along with our friends who work here in our district as school-based program social workers from Beechbrook. So I'd like to invite to the podium Mrs. Trapphegan and Ms. Nowak and Ms. Torino Bell and Ms. Thornton, who have important updates to provide for you this evening about some of the social emotional learning initiatives that we have here in the Twinsburg City School District. Good evening, Denise.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Powers. A few years ago, we as administrators and our staff were charged with knowing every child's story. I would like to share a true story from a second helping of Chicken Soup for the Soul. And this letter was, or this letter is entitled, "Three Letters From Teddy." Teddy was one of those kids who had no interest in school, was unmotivated, came to school with messy hair, and his clothes were wrinkled and smelled musty. His teacher, Ms. Thompson, said she loved all her students the same, but deep down inside, she was not being completely truthful. She knew more about Teddy than she wanted to admit. His records read, "First grade, Teddy shows promise, but poor home situation. Second grade, Teddy could do better, mother seriously ill, no hope at home, no help at home. Third grade, Teddy is a slow learner, his mother died this year. Fourth grade, Teddy is very slow, but well behaved, his father shows no interest in him. Christmas came and all the students brought Mrs. Thompson presents and one was from Teddy. She was surprised by his gift, because she wasn't expecting a gift from Teddy. His gift was wrapped in brown paper bag and held together with Scotch tape. When she opened the bag, out fell a gaudy rhinestone bracelet with missing stones and a bottle of cheap perfume. Other children began to giggle and smirk, but Mrs. Thompson immediately put the bracelet on, put some perfume on her wrist, and held her wrist up saying, 'Doesn't this smell lovely?'" At that end, at the end of that day, Teddy lingered behind the other students as they left. And he came up to Mrs. Thompson and he said softly, "You smell just like my mother and her bracelet looks pretty on you. I am so glad you like my presents." The next day, when the students came into school, they were welcomed by a new teacher. Mrs. Thompson had become a different person. She was no longer just a teacher, but a person committed to loving all of her students and doing things for them that would live long after they left her class. She helped all her students, especially the slow learners and especially Teddy. By the end of the school year, Teddy showed dramatic improvement. She did not hear from Teddy for a long time. Then she received a note that read, "Dear Mrs. Thompson, I just wanted you to be the first one to know, I will be graduating second in my class. Love, Teddy." Four years later, she received another letter. "Dear Mrs. Thompson, they just told me I would be graduating first in my class. I wanted you to be the first to know. The university was hard, but I liked it. Love, Teddy." Four years later, Mrs. Thompson received another letter. "Dear Mrs. Thompson, as of today, I am Theodore Stallard, M.D. How about that? I wanted you to be the first to know, I am getting married next month and I want you to come and sit where my mother would sit if she were still alive. You are the only family that I have now. Dad died last year. Love, Teddy." Mrs. Thompson went to the wedding and sat where Teddy's mom would have sat. She deserved to sit there as she had done something for Teddy that he would never forget. I wanted to share this story with you tonight as I feel it is the pulse of our pupil services department. We believe that all means all and that one person can make a difference in a student's life and one student can make a difference in a teacher's life. The first thing I'd like to do is to celebrate our special education rating scores for 2016. We received this rating in September and this is, it's always in the, in the year past. And again, this special ed rating evaluates our district's compliance and the implementation of IDEA, which are our requirements for special education. Twinsburg received, once again, meets requirements, which is the highest rating available. And we received this rating with a combination of the staff in our office, Mary Ann Brenner, Mary Ann Lesko, Monica Price, all of our administrators and all of our staff, because we all work together in making sure that we're providing the best educations we can for our students with disabilities. The areas that we are rated in include suspensions and expulsions, disproportionality for all categories of students with disabilities, disproportionality in specific disabilities, initial evaluations, early childhood transition, secondary transition, timeline correlation of non-compliance, valid, reliable, and timely data reporting, and IDEA audit. The highest score you can receive in each of those areas is 4.0 and we receive 4.0 in all of those areas. The focal points of our office this year is that we believe that all means all for every student. Last year, we, along with people, along with the curriculum department, we attended a LRE training at SST8 where we looked at our delivery of students, not only for our special ed children, but for all of our students. And from that, and our administrators, all of our administrators from each building attended this, along with regular ed teachers, special ed teachers, and related services. From this cohort, we, as a district, develop common language among the district, so when students go from one building to the other, that they're going to get the same services and parents understand what we're talking about. We also defined what our LRE across the district would be and we also looked at, as our delivery of services, we know that we need to be providing services in the classroom as opposed to pulling children, children out. So this year, along with curriculum, we again are participating in a co-teaching workshop with SST8. We went in September, in October, and tomorrow we're going to be going to another one and then in December. All the principals from each of the building, along with co-teachings, both special ed, co-teaching teams with, which include both special ed and regular ed teachers, are attending these meetings. We also recognized that through these cohorts and our service delivery, that we needed to give professional development to our staff. We invited SST again into our district in September 21st to meet with RBC, to meet with, no, excuse me, to meet with Bissell, the high school, and Wilcox, and they will be coming back November 7th to meet with Dodge and RBC at the building levels to deliver the model of co-teaching, because we know as a district, that is the best delivery model to help students. We are also looking at our OST data from last year and meeting with building administrators and teachers and looking at that data and looking at all the services that we have in the district and what we can wrap around these students so that they can be successful on the OST. The last thing I want to talk about is our PBIS initiative. This is Positive Behavior Interventions and Support and one of the important thing, when kids come to school, we want them all to be safe and to provide a positive climate for them. As part of our PBIS initiative, three years ago, we brought on Beechbrook, which you're going to hear from Carrie, Amanda, and Kim tonight, and it is a sheer privilege to work alongside these three ladies, because they have brought a lot of great services for our students and programmed staff development to our staff. They've also helped with, in writing grants with the district and they'll talk a little bit about these grants tonight. Too Good For Drugs, you heard Mr. Reese talk about them tonight as far as what's going on in his building and we are expanding them to the high school this year. And we received three grants and they'll talk a little bit more about them tonight. The other thing that we have done for, with the grants is we obtained a $30,000 grant from the higher department of mental health and addictive services on prevention. And again, this again is in the framework of our PBIS initiative and this has helped bring a curriculum to all of our students at Bissell, Wilcox, and our low incidence classrooms in the other three buildings as far as a social curriculum that will help our students to regulate how they, their behavior, which in turn will affect how they learn. So at this time, I would like to bring up Carrie, our social worker at the high school, and she's going to tell you a little bit about what's happening at the high school.
Thank you, Denise Trapphegan. I appreciate the introductions from everybody. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak with the community tonight, Mrs. Powers, Mr. Welker, Board of Education, Mr. Aho. It's been a pleasure to work in this district for now our third year. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we have been doing this past year. So this is partially our year-end report for the 16-17 school year. And then I'm also going to talk about with, alongside my colleagues, about our goals and objectives for this coming school year, which we've already begun. Okay, so one of the big initiatives this year that we've put a lot of time and a lot of collaboration with... that we've put a lot of time and a lot of collaboration with our district is our alcohol and drug prevention programming for the 16-17 year. And then we've expanded it for this year too in 17-18. So we've collaborated with a number of people. We've been using administration to help us implement some discipline options for kids that have gotten into trouble and we try to teach them positive decision-making skills so they can avoid those choices in the future. We have also started and co-facilitated two alcohol and drug prevention clubs. One at RBC and Dodge, which is Panda Club. And this year, and again, this year, Teen Institute Club at THS, which is a youth-led prevention club. So those are two things that we did last year. We're also continuing on this year. I have also facilitated weekly group intervention, such as a skill-based group at TAP, which is our alternative building at the high school. So that's things like stress management, alcohol and drug education, setting goals, things like that to kind of help them boost their ability to make good decisions and have resiliency. Also, we've partnered with Community Health Center, which is an agency in Akron. They provide alcohol and drug counseling services, but also prevention services. So we have two prevention coordinators that we work with. And we've been implementing a classroom curriculum called Too Good For Drugs, which you've heard a little bit about. This year, I'll talk about that as well, but last year, we implemented that in the 7th and 8th grade curriculum in the health classes. In addition, we have some outcomes for you to share. We collected some data and compared the 16-17 school year with the 15-16 school year. And what we found at RBC is there was a decrease in the total number of suspensions by 11 and expulsions by three when comparing the first year to the second year. At THS, we saw a significant decrease in suspensions and expulsions with 48 less from one year to the next. So we were very excited to see a change overall. So I know that's kind of tiny to read, but one of the things that we're really proud about that Mr. Reese talked about was our parent education classes that we began at RBC and Dodge. So we've combined the two together and we've implemented a curriculum called Guiding Good Choices. This was paid for, again, by grant funds. So we have two separate grant funds. The ADM board awarded us for the second year in a row, $2,500 to RBC and Dodge and $2,500 to THS to implement all these drug and alcohol initiatives. So we've had, we have scheduled four sessions total at THS and we're going to do five sessions total at Dodge and RBC. It's all hosted at Dodge, but any student and parent that attend Dodge and RBC are all welcome to attend. We've had great responses from the parents so far. It was really like pleasing to know that we had not only had a great response and attendance to our first session, but our second session, we had even more parents attend. And they've been asking us, "When's the next session? We took so much away from this. We got useful skills that we can implement at our home." They've been able to practice and give us good feedback about the things that we've been teaching them. So we're very excited to be able to implement this curriculum at the middle school level. Too Good For Drugs is the curriculum that we have in the health classes. So last year, we did this at RBC, but this year, we'll be also doing it in the 9th grade class. So they will start that this year, come January. And then, as Denise talked about, we will also be assisting in the implementation of the Zones of Regulation curriculum. That's a district-wide initiative. Okay, and now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Kim. And she's going to tell you about our professional development and our consultation.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you for having us here. So we have been providing professional development this year and last year. Last year, we provided, in the spring of 2016, we presented to Wilcox and Bissell on how to support children with challenging behaviors. So we provided information to staff about strategies for engaging students through active listening, empathic responding, positive reinforcement, along with providing them with skills to teach students for self-regulation. Talking about demonstrating caring and believing in future success, understanding the function of children's behavior. So behavior is the way that many children communicate what's going on inside of them and their needs. And so how to respond to what's driving those behaviors in order to help students in the best way possible. In the fall of 2016, we worked with all classified staff and aides at all buildings on kind of the same thing, but we talked more about specific strategies for effectively engaging students. So how to reduce power struggles and increase cooperation. We talked about how to help them regulate their emotions as well as our own when engaging students who might be distributing challenging, demonstrating challenging behaviors. And we practiced and identified practical strategies for positive interaction. In the winter of 2016 and 17, we also facilitated and acted as panel members following Chasing the Dragon, which we opened up to the community and invited people from the community as well to participate on the panel to answer questions. And then we provide general consultation services to all staff in all of the buildings. So that can look like if teachers or staff has specific questions about individual students, how to best work with them and engage them and help them with their learning behaviors or emotions. We also provide consultation on classroom-wide interventions or even school-wide interventions. Another professional development activity we did this year was I presented at Wilcox on a tool to help all students in the building with social and emotion regulation related to the Zones, the Zones of Regulation, which you guys have heard a little bit about. We will be providing consultation to teachers and staff as that continues to roll out. And so over the summer, we continue to work with our students. This summer, we worked with 64 students. And we really enjoy those sessions because it allows us to get to know our families better, because we're really going into the community. We pick our students up from their homes and take them to the community or they'll meet us at the library at the school for traditional like talk counseling sessions. We do, or like helping engage families in the community. We provide a lot of referrals and talk to them about structuring their summer. It's a way to keep kids engaged with school. And as we all know, mental health doesn't stop just because school's out. And so it's really important to be able to meet the children who have the most needs, which we're able to do over the summer. And we also, so students, once they're referred, their consents are active throughout their entire duration in the Twinkster schools. Sometimes they, like their needs are met and they no longer need services. And sometimes there are kids who need services throughout K through 12th grade. And so they, we facilitate transfer sessions over the summer or prior to the year got out. So if they're leaving like Bissell to go over to Dodge or if they're going from RBC to the high school, then we coordinate to allow the students to meet the next social worker so that it helps alleviate anxiety and helps with that transition that a lot of our kids have difficulty with. And then, as many people have talked about, we've really tried to collaborate with community resources to provide the best services possible to our students. Just briefly, total number of referrals, we had, have overall stabilized. So when we first started, there was 261 and last year, 251. As I said, students, so those are the total number of students that we worked with at least one time. And so students might be referred and need like a one-time counseling session. Some kids need them, like I said, for the duration of their time that they're in the district. Or they kind of, or they, a need is addressed and then it might be, they might need it again later. So it kind of fluctuates, but overall, the number of students that we've worked with has remained stable. So now I'm going to turn it over to Amanda Noack to talk about our survey responses.
Good evening, everyone. So just like anyone else, we have to evaluate what we do. And we have to make sure that the work that we're doing is effective and that the people that we're serving, our students, our parents and our staff, feel as though that the work that we're doing is effective and make changes based on their responses. So in order to do that, we decided to survey everyone. And it was a lot of work, but at the same time, it was very helpful in collecting data and being able to reflect on what we were doing that was working and what we needed to do to change. So first, we started with our students. So with the permission of their parents, we surveyed 203 students and we surveyed them anonymously. The importance of serving them anonymously was of great importance to myself, but then also my colleagues, because we wanted these students to really have a voice and share what they felt were some of the benefits of the service that they were provided and then also ways that we could become more effective. I want to highlight some of these quotes that we had received from students, because I really think it shows just how powerful that service was for a few of them. So the first, "Talking to Mrs. Noack gave me the courage to be myself and handle my situations differently." Demonstrating that these students are really learning how to evaluate their situation and create new ways to solve their problems. If I was ever just having one of those days, I couldn't handle even being in school, she was there to talk me through it. Ms. Carrie taught me new ways to help me calm my anxiety and solve my problems. So not only are we working with students that have behavioral issues, but oftentimes, we're working with students whose anxiety or possibly depression or even stress may keep them from attending school. So when we're able to work with these students and provide them with the support they need to stay in school, we know that that is in turn going to affect their learning and have a bigger impact on their academic success. When I got angry, I did the putty with Mrs. Thornton. It helps me get the madness and sadness away. That's obviously someone who's a little bit young, but is able to articulate what it feels like to regulate their emotions and be able to move on with their day rather than being stuck and prohibit any learning as the day goes on. We also surveyed parents. We went ahead and surveyed parents via email. So they received an opportunity to respond to the survey via email. 222 parents were notified. Parents are busy. Unfortunately, we had somewhat of a low response regarding our survey, but we did have some good anecdotal information to share from the parents' perspective. One of the things that I want to point out was the number two, that second bulletin is, "Location: Right at my daughter's school, which is where she has problems." So parents really appreciate that we are in the school and we're able to help these students stabilize, maintain their behaviors and really focus on their learning. Because for many of our students, if they didn't have our services or if they weren't receiving some type of help, it'd be really hard for them to focus in the classroom. So we always come back to, how can we help this student maintain in the classroom in order for them to learn? The first, "Overall, saw improvement in my son's behavior and respect towards others." So not only are we working with these students and families on their behaviors and their regulation in school, but also working on a big piece related to home. So when parents are calling and saying, you know, "My son is demonstrating more respect at home," it's really kind of a feather in our cap, because we know that those same things that we're working on at school are translating to the home. Whenever my daughter was having a tough time, I could call Amanda and she would do her best to check in on her at RBC. Carrie was also a great support for my daughter at the high school. This kind of shows that we're there when you need us. It was always an importance to myself and my colleagues that if a parent were to call, that we would act. We don't want to let these things go to the side, because we know that sometimes concerns and behaviors can escalate and we wanted to really make sure that people's needs were being met. Our students' needs were being met and we were also responding to our parents' concerns. Carrie was committed and truly helped my daughter with her anxiety in school and at home. I am diagnosed with severe depression and she treated me with respect and dignity. I think this one really speaks to just how well-respected parents felt in their relationships with our social workers, specifically Ms. Carrie in this incident. Because it's really scary when you do have a mental health issue and you have a mental illness to go about and to be honest and to be open and to seek help. And these parents are feeling supported in that mission, not only for them, their children, but for themselves. So in addition to surveying our students and our parents, we also decided to survey the staff, because we're in the buildings every day, consulting and collaborating with our staff members every day. So we need to be able to hear their feedback, again, on what we're doing that's helpful, but then also, how can we improve? So 88 people responded to our survey and these are again, just some of our highlights. Kim is amazing. She has taught our staff so much about what she does. This has been a great service to our building. I really think it's important, part of our role to educate, on what mental health looks like, especially at a developmental level. Because mental health in an adolescent looks very different than a mental health issue in a child. And being able to be in the school and educate people on what a behavior means is really important. And it's important in changing the behavior, but also increasing the empathy of that adult working with that child. Like Mrs. Trapp-Hagan started with her story before. When she talked about the impact that that teacher had on that student, when you understand a child's behavior, it really shifts the way that you see that child and you're more open to working with that child and providing them with the care that they need. Amanda Noack was, I feel kind of silly reading this about myself. Amanda Noack was wonderful and very helpful to our students and staff. When she has a conversation with a student and teacher, she has this amazing ability to show her support for the teacher and the student. I really think it's important for these students to know that we are on everyone's side. We're not always on your side or the teacher's side, but we are on everyone's side and we work together to make that relationship cohesive and collaborative. And being able to support our teachers makes them feel more empowered, as well as the same for our students. So the more we can support others, the more they can take control over their own choices in their own life. I think Ms. Carrie is fantastic. She is so approachable for students and staff. I really appreciate that she is visible and engaged with programs in the school. She has supported many of my students this year and I have seen firsthand how much she has helped many of them. So in here, they talk about how Ms. Carrie was visible at the high school and engaged. This is really an important, this characteristic. Because for some schools where you have school-based therapists going in, they're in an office all day with the door closed and students come in and out. So you might not see them, you might not know who they are, you might not know the work that they're doing or how to even access help. So being visible, being part of the school community is not only helpful for our students who see us and learn what we do, but also for our staff and referring us and being able to identify students that need extra help. So again, just a summary. Our parents continue to view Beachbrook as supportive and helpful, both in helping their children and themselves function, as well as providing linkage and referral to communities, to community resources. So another thing that we do quite frequently is we notice when, 251 numbers is a lot between 2.6 people, we're three, but we're 2.6. And it's a lot of, it's a lot. So we have to know when these students need more. And we have to help the parent in making that process happen. And sometimes it's about making phone calls, helping that parent go and receive those services and then really congratulating the parent when they do. Because the more help that that parent gets in getting those services, the better off that student will be. So that's really important for us. Parents share that they appreciate the convenience of in-school services, the worker's commitment to the students and to the support that they get themselves. And staff share that they would benefit from increased consultation and training regarding strategies and interventions for helping students with problematic behaviors. I feel pretty popular when I walk through the school, because I'm being pulled in different directions, which is fun, because I know that people see a need and they want to learn. And in any school, when you, when your staff want to learn and your students want to learn, that's a good place to be. So I really enjoy that. And then, you know, our students, they really are continuing to say that they feel supported and they feel like having a trusted adult within the building whom they could share their issues, their thoughts, their feelings with, really helps them to continue to move on with their day. So thank you again for allowing us to do our work in these schools, because it's really meaningful work. And I like what I do and I think we all like what we do. So we're going to go ahead and talk about our goals for this year. Many of these Many of these, we've already started to implement, but I'm going to have Ms. Lino Bell kind of wrap this up.
Okay. Real quickly, just want to summarize and go over our goals for this coming year. We're going to continue to provide professional development and opportunities with our staff, collaboration with outside agencies as well. We're going to assist in the training and consultation with our teachers and staff for the implementation of the Zones of Regulation curriculum coming up this year. We're also going to increase our time in consultation with the staff that are seeking one-on-one feedback, and just so they can find more interventions to use on an individual basis when they're struggling with a student. We're also going to continue to do our cooperative work with our administration, our guidance counselors, and other staff, so that way, if there's any other students that arise during the year that we identify need our services, we'll certainly refer them to get the help that they need. And then, just real quickly in summation, we had 261 students referred to us during the 2016-17 school year. Our parent, student, and staff feedback was overall very positive. They identified a lot of program strengths. We hope to continue on that manner, and we also hope to continue to implement all of the substance abuse prevention programming and our exciting new curriculums that we have planned for this year, and our presentations with our parents. It's very helpful, I think, to be able to reach the parents, as well as the students. We teach them in class all day, but parents are really the crucial key in helping our students make good choices in school and outside of school. We thank you so much for allowing us to work with your district. We have a heart here, and I feel really at home, as I've always felt since I started this job three years ago. So, I feel very honored to work with your students and get to hear their stories and help the parents as well, and work alongside all of your staff. So thank you again, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Amanda Noack, if there's any questions from the
Do y'all have questions?
Is there something else you need?
No.
No. I mean, do you have everything you need so far? I mean, it's been a great program for the three years that it's been implemented, when it first started. I'm blanking on the goal at the time, if it was the student goal on health.
For Brown Services.
Thank you. And, you know, we noticed that there was a gap, and to be able to help students, and just as important, the families, you know, so, do you need anything else? It's working? We've obviously seen the numbers.
Can I get back to you?
Yeah. Not to put you in the spotlight, but just to put that thought, because that was the only part of the presentation.
I think right now, what's really helpful is our administration is very open, and they have our back. And because our administration is so open with us, and they're very vocal, and we have good dialogue, if there's a need within a media building, we have that administrative support.
I think one of the best parts of this is that the students can get help right where they are, because if you wait until after the school day, or depending on going off-site somewhere, then most of them probably just won't seek the help. So I appreciate that you are in the buildings getting help for students who just come to you.
I can appreciate it. For one, I do think that, you know, having you, having Beachbrook a part of our overall PBIS framework has been very effective, and we are able to quantify the impact that you guys are making, especially with those kids who are being referred. And one of the other things that I do like is the professional development component, not only just with Beachbrook, but also with just PBIS in general. Because PBIS is, it's a systemic, it's meant to be a systemic piece, where culture, building culture, district culture impacts change, impacts students' behavior. What I'm interested in is the level of professional development that our staff is getting with respect to how they impact student behavior. Because throughout my work with the state support team and the state diagnostic review team, you can go into a building and there's evidence that PBIS exists. But measuring the effectiveness and the impact of how it's, how the practice is implemented is another thing, and so you have to, you have to really, you have to be, you have to be around to see it, and then to monitor it. So, my question is, and perhaps this is something that you guys can answer down the road, I am interested to know what impact, you know, how are we measuring the effectiveness of the adults who are expected to implement the strategies around PBIS? Because that's really where the rubber meets the road. You can have, you can have a framework in place, and there's an expectation that everybody's doing it, and some classrooms are more effective than others. But if it's going to be a systemic piece, and you're truly going to change building culture, then there needs to be some conversation and some data that tells us the effectiveness of how it's being implemented on the adult end. So, you know, I think that, to the extent that we have been doing this over the years that we have, I think that we've made great progress. This is just something to look toward with an eye on, making sure that we're staying on top of things, and that we're monitoring the adult behavior as well, and how adult behavior impacts the student behavior, and, you know, keeping them out of trouble with respect to suspensions and expulsions. And even to some degree, maybe they might need, maybe they might not need to be referred to Beachbrook. So, I do appreciate the partnership. I think that it's unique. You don't see it in a lot of school districts or a lot of buildings. So I'm appreciative of that, and I do think that we're getting what we're paying for. And I just want to make sure that in the entire framework of PBIS, that we have an eye on what it's really truly designed to do, because you guys are just a component of the entire framework.
If I could speak to the Zones of Regulation grant. Introducing a curriculum, and Ms. Trapp-Hagan, if I overset, you're going to pop up here. Introducing the Zones of Curriculum and being able to use that grant is going to be helpful in doing exactly what you said you did, or what you're talking about here, because a big component of that is training each teacher and each person within that building to utilize that curriculum. So we're speaking the same language from classroom to classroom, in the hallway, on the playground, in the lunchroom, and everywhere. So being able to implement those things, go after those grants, and start to seek additional funding, so that way we can train, and we can educate, and then also evaluate, as you're speaking of, I think that's how we're going to start to measure how effective we are with our staff.
Absolutely. That's exactly what I was talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Amanda, and Carey, and Kim, and Denise, for providing an update. Important work going on. And Board of Education, if you're paying attention to public education, the topic of Rep. Round Services and Social Emotional Learning is what is current, and we're just impressed, very pleased, that we have a team managed out of Denise's office that is working along with our staff to make sure that our kids are getting the very best, and addressing issues when they happen, and connecting with our parents. So thank you very much for being here this evening. Board of Education, the third report for this evening will be presented by our Director of Curriculum, Jennifer Farthing, and our Supervisor of Innovative Programs, Beth Mariola. As you know, Board of Education, for months now, we have been planning behind the scenes for our Chromebook rollout. It will first begin at Twinsburg High School with our freshmen and sophomores in January of 2018. I'm here this evening to provide an update to you about what has been going on behind the scenes, as well as what the rollout will look like potentially. I invite Mrs. Mariola and Mrs. Farthing to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Powers, Mr. Welker, Mr. Aho, Board of Education and community members. Thank you for having us here this evening to discuss the updates regarding the rollout. I've brought a little show and tell, so that you could see here tonight. We have our Chromebook here with us this evening. Just very quickly, if you could turn your attention to the PowerPoint, we have put the Chromebooks in the hands of our THS teachers. All of our high school teachers have their Chromebooks, and all of our administrative team has a Chromebook in hand. And we have spent the last few months working on getting to know the device, the nuances of such, and then also working with ongoing professional development and how to implement this in the classrooms for instruction. So you see in some of our pictures, the initial phase of rolling out with teachers as they're boxed up, and then even in the center picture, using it on a Saturday at some professional development just this past weekend, immersing herself in what was called Neo-Tai at Beechwood. And this was a technology summit in which we learned how to implement different technology-based tools and extensions and apps. So some of the things we're working on are looking at different tools, like extensions and apps that run alongside with some of the things we do in Google Classroom. And the biggest takeaway from implementing the Chromebooks with our teachers is that it is not a one-size-fits-all approach. We're really trying to, as we're mindful of that with our students, we're really trying to keep that in mind as we work with teachers and staff members, that some are really advanced from that perspective, and others are working their way through just the beginning stages of Google Classroom. And so, we're really being mindful of that as we plan our professional development, working one-on-one and in small group settings. In fact, this upcoming Professional Development Day on the 7th, we have a menu of choices so that teachers can go ahead and choose what they opt to go to, as it fits their needs, their curriculum, and where they're at in terms of their comfort level. Mrs. Farthing, we'll talk to you in just a moment about some of the updates and recommendations for your consideration regarding the Chromebook for students, but I also wanted to let you know that students will be getting their Chromebooks in early January, and we're going to have an upcoming parent evening, which I'll share with you just after Mrs. Farthing
Good evening, Board of Education, Mrs. Powers, Mr. Welker, Mr. Aho. So, in early January, we will be dispersing 680 Chromebooks to our 9th and 10th graders, and we're very excited about this. In addition to that, we have talked, we had a technology planning committee that started last year, and when we were a part of that committee, we did have a conversation about a Chromebook fee. And we surveyed our surrounding districts, and they have a fee of anywhere between $0 to $50. In addition to our survey with our committee, we would like to have a recommendation for your consideration of a $30 yearly fee for our one-to-one devices. And being that next year, or this year, we will be doing only a half-year, we would do a $15 prorated for 2017-18 for our freshmen and sophomores. That would be a $7.50 fee for our students on the reduced lunch plan, and then free for our students receiving free lunch. This would be brought to the Board for Approval at the next meeting. We just wanted to have the conversation and discussion with you this evening. And then we're asking that the fee would be paid prior to the Chromebooks being dispersed to our students, and this would be a part of our conversation on November 29.
Protecting the presentation a little bit tonight. So, on November 29th, which is a Wednesday, at the THS auditorium at 7:00 PM, we are inviting all parents and guardians of 9th and 10th graders, current 9th and 10th graders, to join us, where we'll answer any questions. We'll review some of the device features, discuss fees, the safeguards that we have in place for students. And that flyer that you see right there will be coming out shortly, and we'll be posting that in various places, and so that will be our way of communicating this upcoming event. So we ask that you join us, and we look forward to meeting with the community members, parents, to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions this evening?
I would just note, it's a short presentation, but we all know there's a lot of work that went in, that we've heard through the Finance Committee and various organizations, there's a lot of research that went in, looking at surrounding communities, looking at even our colleagues at CBCC, who've had Chromebooks, and other districts that rolled it out in different manners. And I know you've had lots and lots of conversations with them, of what worked, what didn't, what you can do so that we don't fall into some of those pitfalls here. I know it's a big rollout, and it's going to be phased out, this is just the first two grades, but a lot of work has gone into that, so, thank you.
Truly, and I'll echo that. Our neighbors have been extremely helpful in these conversations, to share with us the strengths and challenges that they've experienced and that we can learn from out of the gate. So, it's a really exciting initiative, and we look forward to putting the devices in the hands of students.
Yeah, I would also, you know, echo Mr. Felver's remarks, especially since I've also sit on the Board of Education for the CBCC, and we did do a rollout of this. So I appreciate the fact that you've kind of done your homework, you know, understood what the pitfalls are, and, you know, doing something that's really appropriate for the district, because every district, you know, is a little different, but there are some common themes of issues and/or concerns that you should be aware of. So I do appreciate the due diligence in that regard, to make sure that we do this the right way.
But in all good-natured teasing, when I picked up my daughter's Chromebook at CBC with her, it was under about 15 seconds, so, it's a high bar to swipe a barcode, hand you the box, there you go.
15-second rollout? I accept the challenge.
Yeah. Granted, they've been doing it a couple of years.
That's true.
But it's, see what you do. We won't have a stopwatch or anything.
And I guess, I just had a couple of questions as far as the fees. Are those going to be earmarked for like repairs, or what is that?
Yes, very good question. That's what we would like to do, is with the fee, we will earmark that for replacements and for repairs. So that will allow us to do keyboards and screens and motherboards and different things. And depending on the price of the device, depending on the damage, it may need to be just replaced. But yes, that would be basically for one break per student. So those type, we have looked at, in addition to the, I'm talking to surrounding districts, we have looked at the pricing of those different things that typically break, whether it's the keyboards, whether it's the bevel around the screen, or all those different things. So that's where that price came in to be.
And are there any type of insurance plans to cover, for example, what do we, you know, do we have anything that's going to cover if we continue to have damages, or, let's say a parent, either the parent can get it, or are we providing that?
We are not going to, we're kind of doing a self-funded insurance, so that's what this is going to be, that we will be using this money earmarked for those repairs and replacements. And the reason we're doing that is, again, trying to learn from our neighbors. Most of them do not do the insurance plans, so we're going to try, we're going to try this route. We know that we're learning, and we're going to see how it works.
Sure. All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board of Education. As Mrs. Farthing indicated, it will be on the agenda for your consideration at the November 15th Board of Education meeting regarding the prorated fee for 17-18. And in the spring of '18, we will discuss the fees for the 2018-19 school year, so we can go to both of those conversations in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Here, we'll move on to the next item, Item G, which is remonstrance. We do have a number of blue cards that have been submitted, so I'll go ahead and read the rules around remonstrance. Persons wishing to address the Board of Education should submit a blue card found in the lobby to the Treasurer prior to the meeting, so that they may be recognized by the Board President, and welcome to make comment. No formal action will be taken on subjects that are not included on this agenda until the Board has had an opportunity to study them. Comments regarding personnel must be submitted in writing to the Office of the Superintendent. And although there is normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at a board meeting, if several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted a maximum of five minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. Each person addressing the Board is asked to give his or her name and address. So we have received, I don't even know exactly how many, but a lot of cards, a lot of blue cards. So what I will ask respectfully, that those that do come up and make comments, be brief in your comments. I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to express themselves, and perhaps, if there are remarks that have already been made, maybe we might refrain from making similar remarks or being redundant, to cut down on the amount of time, on the amount of speaking time. So to the extent possible, we want to make sure that we stay within the 30-minute allotted time, and so that everyone has a, really has an opportunity to come up and speak. So I'll introduce the first person, which is Brett Harney.
Brett Harney, 9960 Forest Lake Drive.
Brett Harney, 9960 Forest Lake Drive. I'm a longtime Twinsburg resident. In addition, I've always been proud of the city that I call home, proud that my children have gone through the Twinsburg School District. I've worked with Brian Fantone in many different facets over the years, as I'm highly involved in Twinsburg's youth sports. All interactions with Brian have been very positive and supportive. Unfortunately now, while I'm still glad to live in Twinsburg, I'm relieved that my last child is a senior. And I'm glad that I will have limited exposure to the school district. It hurts me to say that. The recent events surrounding Brian's employment, the district's reason for insubordination, and the Board of Education's behavior at the last meeting is unacceptable. I don't want to get into the details around he said and she said, leading to Brian's leave with the Twinsburg School District. I do want to discuss the evolution of what has transpired in Twinsburg in my experience since that last meeting. I've been contacted by multiple people, 10-plus, about the current work environment within the school district, and feel that the current administration's My Way or Highway policy is typical protocol. Witnessed the Board of Education arguing amongst themselves. You are our representatives. Figure it out. You support us. Do the right thing. You know things are bad when people from outside the state of Ohio are contacting me and asking what the heck is going on in Twinsburg. You are our representatives. We expect more from you. To Board of Education, I have two comments left. Board of Education, I want to thank you for running and being Board members. However, your job has gotten a lot more challenging than you probably expected. You have to look at a viewpoint that is Mrs. Powers's viewpoint correct, or to side with someone who obviously the community loves, as you can see from the support here, in respect of Brian Fantone. The decision that you make will set a precedence. As for Mrs. Powers, regardless of the outcome of what goes on, you're going to need to do some soul searching, and you're going to need to figure out how to work with your staff, mentor your staff, and trust your staff. Thank you.
Next is, thank you for your comments, Mr. Harney. Next is Christina Savitt.
Hi there. My name is Christina Savitt at 3087 Abrams Drive. The last time I stood up in front of a large group to speak was in my speech class at University of Minnesota, which was a very long time ago. I tell you this because I'm putting myself in a very uncomfortable setting, because I feel so strongly about the reinstatement of Brian Fantone as athletic director. I stand up here on behalf of many students, faculty, staff, teachers, parents, and most importantly, on behalf of Brian and Cara Fantone, as well as their boys. I personally have been so disheartened in regards to this situation, from how Brian was escorted out of the building, to the humiliation their family has had to suffer, the emotional and mental state they have suffered, as well as them trying to explain all of this to their boys, who have to go to school here every day. Over these past weeks, many of us have also learned things that are not right within our school system, things that have been kept quiet from our community, and this situation has actually given voice to those who have wanted to be heard for a long time. I would also like to address the fact that this situation has not been a great example for our students. As a parent, I believe that our schools have the ability to partner with us in teaching our students the differences between right and wrong. This situation, from my perspective, has not been handled well, quite unjust. My husband and I have had to talk with our own children, who are students here in the high school, and teach them that the way Brian Fantone was handled was completely inappropriate and non-professional. Brian Fantone makes mistakes, just like every one of us. Kathy Powers makes mistakes. Everyone on the Board makes mistakes. And every one of us sitting or standing here makes mistakes. Now some of us must, now some of us learn from our mistakes, and I know from specific examples that Brian Fantone has learned from his mistakes. As a parent of athletes, our school needs all the help we can get in regards to athletics. We are continually trying to earn respect of our neighboring schools when it comes to our athletic program here in Twinsburg. Brian Fantone has been a huge asset to our athletics here in the high school. Before my son drove himself to practice, I would drive him to early morning football practice. He always had to be so early, so I'd have him to the field by 6:30 AM, and there was Brian Fantone's red Jeep. Sometimes my family would be one of the last to leave a late-night soccer game, and there was Brian Fantone, making sure everything was closed up correctly. You see, I don't know Brian, or Cara, or any of their boys personally, but I do know one thing. I know that Brian Fantone is a hard worker, and he's not walking around shooting the breeze or chit-chatting. He takes his job seriously, and we need people like him in our schools, helping make our schools better, helping make our athletic program better. I'm not only speaking on behalf of athletes and sports, I'm also speaking on behalf of non-athletes. I have a daughter who is not an athlete, and when all this came down, she randomly came up to me and asked, "Mom, do you know Brian Fantone, who everyone is talking about? He's a really nice guy." To which I replied, "Why do you say that?" She said, "I walk through the halls of Twinsburg High School every day, and not many teachers or staff say hi to me. But every time Mr. Fantone walks by me, he says hi. He acknowledges my presence." That's a big deal to me as a parent of high schoolers. Every one of our students need to feel valued, and my daughter feels valued by Mr. Fantone, who doesn't even know her and says hi to her. I have one more example from a former student, who has now graduated from college and could not be here tonight, but just so you know, she is here. She didn't make it. I had no idea she even knew what was going on here at the high school. I wanted to pass along something she texted me late one night in regards to Brian Fantone. She said, "I sure hope Mr. Fantone is reinstated. If I didn't have to work, I would be there. He was my 7th grade history teacher, and always had the student's best interest in mind. He was one of my favorites." As I wrap this up, I'm not only asking you, but I am begging you, as a parent, to reinstate Brian Fantone as the Athletic Director of Twinsburg High School. We absolutely need more people like him in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savitt, for your comments. Next is Grant Boyes.
Good evening. I'm Grant Boyes. I live at 10128 Bellman Drive. Tonight, I'd like to address you on the ongoing investigation of Athletic Director and Coordinator of K-12 Activities, Brian Fantone. I'd like to express my support for the reinstatement of Brian Fantone. First of all, Mr. Fantone is an excellent athletic director. He makes sure all sporting events run smoothly and safely. He has hired the right coaches and staff for many sporting events, including John Garber, who just led the girls' soccer team to district runner-up, which is the furthest they've ever gone. Not only is Mr. Fantone a worthy athletic director, but also a great man. I had Mr. Fantone for 7th grade social studies. As a student with a vast interest in the subject, he was helpful in my pursuit to learn as much as I could. For students maybe not that interested, Mr. Fantone taught a thought-provoking and fun class. He demonstrated a fantastic teaching ability for every student. I want you to recall that story from Chicken Soup for the Soul earlier. The student that helped Thomas, Mrs. Thompson, that is Mr. Fantone. Although he is although he has been great for Twinsburg City Schools, he is a role model of a family man. He cares and deeply loves his children and his wife. One of my favorite memories of Progressive Field is seeing Mr. Fantone win the scoreboard game that they have. The love, happiness, and togetherness that the family showed was incredibly evident. Now, I know whatever Mr. Fantone has done is, seemed as wrong and inappropriate to some of you. Well, I and many others believe it is minimal, and to use a soccer analogy, it's tic-tac. Many students think it is weak, ridiculous, and frivolous to fire a man for these supposed reasons. Many of my fellow students adore Mr. Fantone, and would like to see him back in his office. Last, I have had one major disappointment as a student athlete in my four years at Twinsburg High School. On my senior night and every other Class of 2018 senior night, there was one absent person through all of them, and that was Athletic Director, Mr. Fantone. He did not get the opportunity to congratulate us, and we could not get the opportunity to thank him for the service that he has done. Not being able to shake his hand and thank him for my class's success in athletics was a great disappointment. My solution, and the one I hope you decide, would be for my class to be able to walk across E.J. Thomas Hall on May 22nd and shake his hand as our Athletic Director. That would be a decent, honest, and good solution to this problem that has been created. Any questions? With that, I conclude my public participation on tonight's board meeting.
Next is Joshua Sladic. Sladic? Sorry if I got that wrong.
Joshua Sladic, 1265 Sharonbrook Drive. Board of Education members, good evening. My name is Joshua Sladic. I'm a very proud 2006 alumni of Twinsburg City School District. During my time here as a student in the district, I was exposed to a multitude of life lessons, not just in the classroom, but on the soccer field as well, much like few of the boys here representing. Staff such as Mike Lally, Lynn Dengees, Kevin Hurson, Jimmy Hope, Brian Davis, Gus Kritzlo, Casey Curly, and many, many more, have given me the chance to not only enjoy my time as a student, but also as an athlete while representing not only myself, my family, and my community, wherever it is that I went. I can share fond stories of the time at Dodge and Media School, Chamberlain and the high school, from learning about the Underground Railroad in Mrs. Jensen's 5th grade class, and being allowed to roam the hallways while playing tag and not getting in trouble for it, to watching fire appear from an empty water jug in Mr. Funk's 6th grade class. If you want to know how to make an egg fit in a water jug, use a match, we're going to talk to you. In middle school, completing my homework and doing well on tests, I can move up the social pyramid in Brian Davis's history class, because no one wanted to be in a touch bowl while learning about India. Mrs. Richards and Ms. Casino actually found ways for me to understand math, which, if you know me well enough, is no easy feat. And also Ms. Free, now Ms. Elwan, I learned all about the states and their capitals, something that, as a result of my own experience, a lot of kids don't even know nowadays, unfortunately. Lastly, I'll be honest, there are way too many stories to share from high school, but I will share one. My senior year playing in the district finals at Stowe, seeing the crowd filled with not only Twinsburg students, teachers, residents, but also administration, our former mayor, Kathy Prokop, was their front center. Thank you for allowing me to reminisce just then. With that being said, in my personal opinion, what is going on with Mr. Fantone is honestly very disheartening. I was extremely fortunate, and I do mean fortunate, to be able to not only coach in the district from 2010 to 2011, but also I was a member of the boys' soccer program, not just in that capacity as a coach, but also as a teacher. In 2015, I'm sorry, 2014, I was a long-term sub for Mrs. Forrester and also Mrs. Humble, as started September 2014 until February 2015. While coaching for Twinsburg, Mr. Alex Popovich was the AD at the time. I know throughout the season, there were always two people I could turn to help and turn for help, and that was Mike Lally and that was Pop. That being said, with the fact of knowing that they had the best interests not just for the student athletes in mind, but as well as us coaches, I was able to do my job more effectively. I was able to coach. It's a passion of mine. Even to this day, there's kids that I had in those two freshman classes, I'll see them in the community, whether it's them or their parents, and we can reminisce of their freshman year. And it was very, it's one of those moments where when you hear about the impacts you had on their lives, it kind of hits on, much like if your kids do something well, you feel that sense of pride. It's one of those types of things for me as well. As a current varsity head coach at Keston High School, I've seen firsthand how much time is involved on the 80s part. I also see how much planning, scheduling, with the meetings, both about our teams at the school and their membership on various boards. All of this equals time away from not just their families, but also from their own personal lives. That being said, I have all the support that I need from my AD, Mr. Reed Coronary, to be as successful as I need to be, not just for my program, but also for my players, so that they are able to ensure and achieve their goals that they set for themselves and for their team. My superintendent, Mrs. Nancy Santilli, has seen at every home football game, occasionally the boys' soccer, girls' soccer, and volleyball games. I say that just, that's my experience at the fall sports. She's also seen at the winter sports with boys and girls' basketball, as well as cross-country in the fall, track in the spring, baseball and softball. The reason why I bring that up is because our administration is very, very interactive with our community, with our schools. I can have an open-door policy with Mrs. Santilli whenever I need to. And I have to ask, do you, let alone our coaches, feel that way with Mrs. Powers? Are you able to just go and say hi, sit down and talk? If you have a problem, can you go and talk to her? Are you able to have any sort of personal interaction? Because I can tell you with 100% certainty, I do with my AD and with my superintendent. And it's the best feeling ever, knowing that they have my back and I can do what's best for my kids, for my program, for the community, and for the schools as well. Looking just at a few of the problems that's going on right here, we've allowed Mrs. Powers to implement such things as pay to participate, which have prevented athletes from being able to play multiple sports, no matter what the numbers tell you personally. We also have allowed a ridiculous implementation of anonymous sports surveys, which allow people to essentially rip on coaches and administration without having to take ownership for it. I'm guessing this doesn't really help matters when we are trying to recruit quality coaches to come to Twinsburg and work with our athletes. Are we a district planning on putting surveys out over other groups of employees, or is this a bad idea just for us to take up personal frustration on our coaches? I ask you this, what if your job was solely dependent on a survey by your customers, fellow employees, or any other clients? Would you feel safe going into work every day, knowing that you are working every day and could be fired for any little thing you possibly do wrong according to a survey? We all want what's best for our student athletes and coaches to achieve success while they are playing on the fields. However, those athletes and coaches can never achieve that success when they are constantly living in fear. This entire situation with Mr. Fantone has proven yet again how out of touch our school district is when it comes to athletics, and how we will just continue to struggle to find consistency. Just so you're aware, over the course of the past 10 years, we've had five different ADs.
Joshua, I'm just, excuse me. Respectfully, I'm going to ask, I have to ask you to wrap it up, because we do have other people that need to speak.
Fair enough. I'll end with this. How do you feel about the current state of affairs? Are we going to allow this embarrassment to continue, or are we going to do the right thing and put Mr. Fantone back in his office to give these coaches and athletes the support they so desperately need right now? Without coaches knowing they are supported from the top, they cannot do their jobs effectively, and who are the only ones affected when this happens, the student athletes. And I ask you this, what do they do to deserve this? Thank you.
Next is Linda Capelli-Sladic.
I'm Linda Capelli-Sladic, and I'm 1265 Sharonbrook as well. I am here tonight for multiple reasons, one of course being to support Brian Fantone as Twinsburg High School Athletic Director. However, I will let the many citizens of Twinsburg here stand up and talk about what Brian has done for the last 12 years of his employment in the district. Instead, I will focus on what a complete embarrassment this past month has been for our school district and for the great community that we live in. So why are we here today? Close to a month after Mr. Fantone was escorted from his office by an HR director and a business manager in the middle of a school day while classes were changing, confusing the issue even more is that 12 hours prior to this treatment, he received accolades from you, the Board, from Mrs. Powers, the superintendent, from the people in the community, for saving the life of one of our football players. from the people in the community for saving the life of one of our football players. Knowing, it bothers my mind, knowing that this was done when somebody else knew what was going to happen in the next day. Many questions have been asked over the past month, most stemming from the fact that this process is continuing without the details being passed to the community and our tax dollars being very wastefully spent. If this was a slam dunk case against Mr. Fantone, then why are we here tonight with no direction whatsoever? I believe, as others believe in this room, that there's no case for firing Mr. Fantone. It is quite clear that the last B.O.E. meeting of the Board of Education met, that the Board of Education members that we elected can't come to an agreement on this and thus will push it off in the hopes that Mr. Fantone will step away or resign. I believe that there is nothing but a case of our superintendent who is concerned more with her personal agenda instead of the well-being of the district. When the situation started, I'm sure the board was presented with issues that at the time felt Mr. Fantone should have been removed. But however, again, it has been four weeks, and now it simply looks to the public as another incident of our superintendent micromanaging every aspect of the school district. To receive respect, you must give respect. When you are talked to staff members and clearly to us, they are afraid of the retaliation of our administration. Through many conversations with the school district employees over the past month, one common thread I have found in each conversation is they believe our school district is crumbling. There is no support for the staff. Perfect example of this, Mr. Fantone was presented with the situation with the coach. He went to the head of the Athletic Directors OHSAA to get guidance. That gentleman told Mr. Fantone he used to support his coaches 100%. Mr. Fantone did that, and look where we are. Not only is this district suffering, but our children are in the middle of this chaos. Surrounding districts are thriving, and we are still getting Fs on our report card. If it is the change in the grading system, as we were told, then the other districts all got As and Bs still. You, as the Board of Education members, were elected by this community to serve in this district, to make it the best it could be, yet instead of being the CEO of a district and direct the district to the brighter and more respected one you choose, to keep your eyes closed, your mouth shut, and allow someone who should answer to you tell you what to do? The question now is, will this community continue to support you in levies that you feel you need? I don't think Mr. Fantone is the problem. I truly feel each one of you Board members know who and what the problem actually is. Thank you.
Next up is Stacy Brazzi.
Good evening, Stacy Brazzi.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Nobody ever gets it right.
My bad.
No, no. 9939 Morley Drive. Superintendent Powers and Board of Education, you have made the Twinsburg City School District an embarrassment with the possible termination of an integral part of our schools, athletes, and students. Mr. Fantone's presence has been missed every day by students, including my high school athlete. Board members, you are elected by the community to be our voice. I think our voice has been loud and clear. That voice will also be loud and clear the next time a levy rolls around. Please do the right thing and bring back Brian Fantone. Changes need to be made elsewhere to get this school district back on track, and Brian Fantone is not the problem. Thank you.
Excuse me if I screw this up again. Tracy Mazany? Okay, all right. Amery Grammons.
First, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak on a manner that I find very important and influential to my students within the school system, myself as a parent, and the community at large. The subject is the retention of Brian Fantone as Athletic Director. I have to say that I am not a lifelong resident of Twinsburg. I live in the township, so I have no involvement in city politics. What I do know is that I have spent the past two years with Brian Fantone in his role as Athletic Director and can only speak to my interaction with him as a parent, as a volunteer, and a member of the Twinsburg community at large. As a parent, the commitment and the daily interaction I've seen of Brian with the student athletes is truly remarkable. In measuring an Athletic Director, I would ask you, what value do you put on someone who would take the time out of their busy schedule to stop and talk to a student athlete who might not have the natural talent that other athletes have, but wants to participate in a team sport and encourages that student to do so? Conversely, flip the coin. I have seen Brian not only encourage and promote, but meet personally with student athletes that exemplify what we're looking for in Twinsburg and promote them to be students that are role models to their peers as well as the young athletes growing up in our community. How do you measure that? Please think about that when you vote. As a volunteer and a booster, I've worked with Brian at athletic and community events and can only compare him to how I've worked with previous Athletic Directors. What I can say is Brian shows up. What I mean by that is I have seen Brian personally go from cross-country meet to volleyball game, check in at concession stand, sit down in the Athletic Boosters meeting and give his Athletic Director report, and then go back to the volleyball game, back to cross-country, all in one evening, while he's away from his young kids, his wife, his family, continuously, day after day, week after week. Please consider that. The investment Brian has made in our community by being a positive influence over our impressionable young student body is something that should be cherished and valued and not thought of lightly. The impact Brian has had in his two years as A.D. has brought parents and students closer together in athletic programs. What you do not see as board is how Brian has been the voice of reason between parents and the administration, between students, between coaches. Please consider that when you're making your decision. Who would you want in his place? As a manager of people, I have to say, when I have to measure my team, I do that by two aspects. One is very black and white. Did they make their numbers, or did they not make their numbers? That's very easy. Secondly, is what are they doing to promote my industry, my region? And that is very shade of gray. There's various shades of gray in that atmosphere. Would I rather have an employee who's sitting at their desk, has all their paperwork done, has all their training done, or do I want them out in front of customers selling and promoting my business? That is what I have to measure. And I can have an employee who doesn't make their numbers, but is out there doing what I need them to do, being in front of the customer. That is how I view Brian. So, in closing, what I'd like to say is, when you take a look at what you're looking for in Athletic Director and what we're looking at as community, don't just look at the shades of gray, but rather the ray of sunshine that Brian Fantone brings to this athletic program, and please vote to retain him and put him back in his position. I would also like to make a motion for the board, or ask the board to make a motion for a continuation of time so that everybody has a chance to speak their voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Whitney Daly.
Since we have three minutes left, I will go ahead and make that motion that we do a continuation.
I'll, um...
You'll...
Yeah, I'll manage this, so that's fine. Go ahead and make your remarks.
Yes, there's no second.
Thank you. Whitney Daly. Whitney Daly, 4195 Morley Drive. Good evening, everyone. I stand in unwavering support of Brian Fantone as the Athletic Director at Twinsburg. Mr. Fantone is a man of integrity, who is committed to Twinsburg High School, his family, and the entire Twinsburg community. We had the privilege of meeting the Fantone family shortly after moving to Twinsburg from out of state, and we were blown away by their hospitality and love for the community that Mr. Fantone had been a part of for his entire life. Beyond his role in the classroom, Mr. Fantone devoted himself tirelessly to the middle school community. He and Kara chaperoned middle school dances. He led class trips, worked as the A.D., and served as a mentor and role model to so many young people at a challenging and pivotal time in their lives. Over the past 10 years, the same level of dedication and integrity has been evident in each position that he has held. I work in a high school, and our boys are active in travel baseball and soccer, so I'm keenly aware of the pressure and intensity surrounding youth sports. In such a cutthroat environment, it is easy to lose sight of what is most important. This makes having people in positions of power, like the Athletic Director, who are models of integrity, essential. Mr. Fantone is a good and honest man, who has already emerged as a role model for our three boys. He and his family are pillars in the community that we now call home. I am very disappointed and disheartened by the injustice afforded to Mr. Fantone so far, who was offered a three-year contract extension this summer, but this is also an injustice to the entire Twinsburg school community. As was just noted in the five-year forecast, funds are tight, and balancing budget requires the support from the entire community. This decision has already cost the district thousands of dollars. In the agenda notes, there's a subpoint that says the sub is $347 a day that could be invested in enhancing our children's education, supporting our hard-working staff members, or benefiting the teachers who are tirelessly committed to our children, which I witness regularly in my involvement in the schools. Failure to move forward or handing down an unjust decision could cost the district exponentially more money, hinder future support and investment from this close-knit community, and negatively affect the thousands of students who are proud to be Tigers. Thank you so much for your consideration. Have a great night.
Thank you for your remarks. Okay, next we have Peter Daly.
Good evening, Peter Daly, 4195 Morley Drive. While I echo the sentiments that have already been spoken here tonight, I am not here to comment on Brian's character or the type of man that he is. I think the evidence of that is already overwhelming. What I'd like to comment on is it is your responsibility individually and collectively to ensure the integrity of this investigative process. In my work, I deal every day with investigations that affect people's lives, as you are right now. And so, I understand the need for confidentiality. I understand the need for time to complete an investigation. But I also understand the need for those who are making decisions to take an honest and objective look at evidence, to not be a rubber stamp for action that's already been taken, and to not try and fit evidence from an investigation around a preconceived conclusion. The frustration that's come here is that this has gone on for so long. Mr. Curtis detailed earlier in tonight's meeting another investigation involving the superintendent that was wrapped up in a matter of days with no administrative lead required. Mr. Fantone has now been out almost a month. And so, your responsibility is to take a look and ask the question, has our investigation produced evidence, facts, not opinions, not conjecture, facts, that conclusively show that Brian can no longer serve the families and the students and the staff of the Twinsburg School District? And if the answer is no, it's your responsibility to have the integrity to say that, to do that quickly. Because the longer this goes on, the less integrity this process has. And so, we are asking or demanding that you fulfill that responsibility and that you move quickly. I'm sure that some of you are hoping that with time, public interest will fade, and people will become less interested in the outcome here. We will not. That will not happen. We're anxiously awaiting your action. And we'll keep doing that until we know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pamela Stafford.
She's coming, she's coming, okay.
My name is Pamela Stafford, 10431 Town Court. I'm going to try and sneak around a bunch of things.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet. I have two neurological diseases that make me not quite an eloquent speaker, as I once was, so... But I'm concerned enough tonight that I'm standing here uncomfortable, as I've always told my children, to do the right thing, even if it's hard. For a truly sad percentage, mine include of our households, there is either no positive or no male role models to speak of in our households. And five minutes would be an impossible amount of time to share with you the times that A.D. Fantone has had a moment to share with our children, moments that, over the last few weeks since this began, that they have shared with us in fear of losing such an important part of their lives. Because if you think this hasn't affected the student body at T.H.S., you're grievously mistaken. They've also shared their lives in moments of pride, that the man that you charged with 1,300 students, that he took the time to make sure that each one of them, that he came into contact with specifically felt important. None of those moments stood out more painfully to me than when the 22 high school senior football players that passionately took the field for the last time Friday night. For six years, Athletic Director Fantone watched these then-awkward boys turn into outstanding young men, all mentioned at one point or another that night, that he should have been there because he had always, always been there for them. A moment ripped from them that night, that season, for what again? I'm not originally from Twinsburg. I chose Twinsburg. I've attended schools in a few countries, provinces, and states, so I have a pretty good reference on engaged staff. I'm aware that you have careers outside of your Board of Education responsibilities and that you take on these responsibilities because you truly care about our children and our community. So if you've not had the unique pleasure, as I have, since I now have two children at the high school, both in fall and spring sports, it is a rare day that you don't see Fantone here and there in conversation with students or staff buzzing about, working on one project or another. In fact, it was a Saturday morning before a JV game that Colin Bowser was involved in a life-or-death medical situation, and A.D. Fantone was one of the first administrators there on scene, then spending countless hours consoling confused and concerned athletes that day, as well as checking on them, and then at the meetings throughout the week, giving updates on Bowser's condition. Now, please don't get me wrong. I say this all the time because I've worked with over 1,000 volunteers throughout the city, throughout the state of Ohio. Before you can complain, have you volunteered yet? To be honest, the answer is no. I'm the first to admit, I'm not even close to be qualified to be on a Board of Education. And honestly, I'm so grateful that there are people like you on the planet because our children are much better off, better off because of people like you that are willing to stand up here and be willing to educate and take care of our kids. But I will say, I've reached out to many of the same people who asked me to speak tonight, because many have, many people called me and texted me, I'm not even really sure, who asked me to speak, actually last week, and I chickened out. This week, not so much, because they really told me it was important I was here tonight. They're either legally not allowed to speak, or they're afraid to speak publicly, but they all asked me to remind you of a couple of things: Your responsibility to the citizens of Twinsburg and their children, of the chain of command here at the Board of Education, and that alienating behavior like only making agendas available to parents six or seven hours before a meeting are the kind of things that create distrust in the process, all of which could have been avo- distrust in the process, all of which could have been avoided with better, or should I say, any communication, not necessarily information. Thank you.
Jeff Deeds. Pam, nice job. I hate following people like that. I've known Brian for about the past half dozen years. I've worked with him as a member of the Athletic Boosters, and also as a parent. As a parent, I've had children, both male and female, play football, basketball, run track, cross-country, swim. I mention these because Brian treats all sports and all athletes equally. There is no favoritism. In fact, last year, Brian Seko and I were tasked with hanging up the banners of the individual students on the fences before the football game, and Brian Fantone's orders were to put them up in a certain order. You put a banner for the football team, then you put a band member, then you put a cheerleader, then you put a football team, then a band member, then a cheerleader. No favoritism. It was important to him that everyone got equal billing. During my dealings with Brian, I find him ethical, fair, responsible, responsive to my needs and needs of others. A few summers ago, I had to drop off my son Justin's, and Justin's here with me, we had to drop off his physical form in order to get him, in order to get it in time for their summer football camp. I realized it was the last day. I'll Brian up, it was in the summer, he was still at the school. He said, "Come on down, I'll keep the school open." Kept the doors open, made certain that everything got filed for us, said, "Mr. Deeds, what can I do for you? Anything else you need?" With a smile. Obviously, Brian is always there at sporting events that are here at the school, but he's also away at the school, at the school events. And the key, really what it comes down to, we all know people that take jobs for a paycheck, right? Brian takes it to that next level. Brian is passionate, passionate about Twinsburg Athletics. And I can't tell you how important as a parent that is to me, that you've got an athletic director that's passionate about the well-being of his student athletes. It's so, so important. He and I were speaking last year about strength training, and he was telling me about Mrs. Solis's basketball team got some special funds from the Athletic Boosters, all legal, I say special funds, all legal, to help the basketball team with strength training. He was glowing, telling me how much better the basketball team was gonna be because they had this special strength training. It was unbelievable just how passionate he was about this. I'm not privy to everything that goes on within these walls, you know, on a daily basis. But from my perspective, I have nothing but glowing statements about Brian Fantone. If these items, and I don't know what they are, but if these items are minor, which I'm assuming they are from what I've heard, let's fix the issues, let's make up, and let's get 'em back in here. Nothing is irreversible, folks. We're a little community, we're a small family. We tell kids all the time, hey, we all have problems, right? It's how we fix the problems that makes the difference. Let's fix the problem. It's a little problem, let's fix it. I'm almost done. Last, I was looking on the school board website the other day, and I came across a page titled "District Quality Profile." I don't know if you guys have seen it or not, I assume one of you wrote it or helped write it. I want to read the last sentence from the district quality profile. The very last sentence said, "We are proud of our school district where the schools and the communities are one." Again, where the schools and the communities are one. If we truly are one, and although I speak for myself, I think I'm equating the community here, if we truly are one, let's not lose a good man. Let's retain Brian Fantone. Let's retain him for the sake of the students, for the athletes, and for the community. Thank you.
It's Jeffrey Goss.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Happens all the time. It's the G that confuses people. 9298 Jason Drive. And as everyone else, I'm here today to support Brian Fantone, and on behalf of the broader Twinsburg community, ensure this board acts in the best interest of its students and of this community in retaining Mr. Fantone as our athletic director. In my professional life, I'm a general counsel and H.R. director of a company of over five hundred employees. In those roles, I look to ensure that we are consistent in our action, that we are transparent in our process, that we are responsive to our customers, that we're supportive of our employees without managing through fear or intimidation, and that we adequately weigh risk, cost, and liability. And it seems unfortunately, with respect to Mr. Fantone, this board and the management of this school district does not share those ideals. This past May, this board enthusiastically offered Brian a new contract as our athletic director, and in his service to these schools, I understand he's had a clear disciplinary record. And while in the world of H.R., any one act could prove terminable, from a consistency perspective, the cleaner the record, the more egregious that single act must be to warrant termination. And given the obvious and stunning lack of actions which even remotely shock the conscience here, it could not be more clear that there are absolutely no grounds for termination at this time. Inconsistency in H.R. matters is a risk and liability which should be avoided at all costs. And I recognize that this is a public body, and that you address matters of public importance, and that you have a responsibility to inform the public within certain legal limits of important matters regarding our schools. And throughout the last several weeks, there have been repeated attempts by this district and this board to evade, dissuade, and misinform the public. The public trust we imbue in each one of you, as stewards of this district, crumbles further with each day you fail to act, you fail to speak to truth, and you fail to lead. Your lack of transparency makes it clear that this community is willing to appease your supposed adherence to due process, more so than you individually and collectively respect the public will and the community perspective. And in spite of this lack of transparency, or perhaps because of it, the level of support for Mr. Fantone in this community is overwhelming. More than seventeen hundred people put their names on an online petition supporting Mr. Fantone, a number which is stunningly similar to the eighteen hundred people who helped pass your levy in May. And I suspect... And I suspect many of those supporters of Mr. Fantone, myself included, were likewise among the supporters of your levy. And I remind you that this is the very same community you will ask to support your next levy, your next initiative, and your next election. Communities support those who support the interests and respect the voices of the community. But communities also have long memories for those who failed to respond to the community interest. And unfortunately, I'm also here to speak for countless friends and neighbors who can't or won't speak today, for fear of reprisal in schools or within the community. I've heard from far too many people, and quite frankly, even one is too many, who are affiliated with this school district, who only wish to speak in hushed tones or anonymously based on prior action or intimidation in the greater body of our schools. Management by fear is no way to manage. We remind our children that bullying is never acceptable, but more so... More so, we teach them that kindness counts, that caring counts, that cooperation is key. And yet, it's not clear that the school district as a body shares the very ideals we teach our children. And last, I note that several members of this panel at the last school board meeting spoke of minimizing risk, of lowering liability, of controlling costs, and yet, by failing to see through a thinly veiled search for a fall guy and acting hastily at the behest of management without a full rendering of facts, this board, in hiring an interim A.D. at up to $10,000 a month, in potentially losing out on the ability to attract football playoff games over the next month, and in risking future possible litigation over these matters, has, despite its claims to the contrary, only acted to increase risk, expand liability, and expend valuable resources. It must stop. It should stop today. It's time to put this matter behind us as a district and as a community, not tomorrow, not next week, but now, in the interest of serving the very best interest of this community, in the interest of showing consistency of action, in the interest of proving the transparency of process counts, in the interest of showing that cooperation, kindness, and caring counts, in the interest of saying that we have no patience for fear and intimidation, in the interest of truly minimizing risk, lowering liability, and controlling costs, this board should speak clearly, and strongly, and firmly, and ensure that Brian Fantone is retained as our athletic director, and let his good service, that is consistently displayed across this community, all on behalf of each of our kids, continues. Thank you.
Next, we have David Andrews.
Good evening. My name is David Andrews, 3161 Neely Lane. As I think all of you know, I sat in your seat for nine years on this Board of Education, and during my tenure, had to take action to terminate a popular coach and teacher. That process was not unlike what I have been watching play out over the last several weeks with Mr. Fantone. Back then, like now, there were angry groups of community members urging the board to keep the teacher. At that time, I was exceedingly frustrated, as I'm sure you are now, by the fact that I could not disclose what I had learned about the situation in an executive session, while rumors circulated in the community that were either half-truths or at times, straight-out lies. Based on that experience, I can assure everyone in this community that no one on this board, no one in this administration, relishes the decision they have to make. This athletic director, as we've heard tonight, is well-loved, and was hired just three years ago, and his contract was renewed just this past May. All of these same people up here today, Mrs. Powers and the school board members who will be voting on the issue, were here at the time of his hire, or at the time of the renewal of his contract, or both. Obviously, no one is out to get anyone. I urge everyone in the community to take a deep breath, recognize that you don't have all of the facts, and trust that your neighbors, and yes, all of these people are your neighbors, have taken the time to serve their community by becoming members of the Board of Education, and will do what is best for the district and its students. It's easy to sit on the sidelines with little information and criticize. Instead of taking shots at these people on social media, we should be thankful that there are a select few who are willing to take on the positions of superintendent and Board of Education member, and do the best they can for our school district and our students. To the board members, I say, please don't be swayed by loud protests and petitions. This is not a popularity contest. Only the five of you, and Mrs. Powers and Mr. Fantone, know what happened. Do your best to filter out the noise and act on the information you have to protect the district and our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes remonstrance. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the treasurer's report, item H.
Before we do, I would just like to thank all community members that came tonight. We are working hard, all of us together, to come to a solution to this particular situation. So, please know, we are doing what we need to do to move forward. We spent a tremendous amount of time on Monday, and we're working together, and we are, we're moving in a direction. So, I think that's a fair statement. I think it's... And we appreciate everyone, especially students that came forward today. I commend you for participating in the process and letting us hear your voices, letting us hear your experiences. We are listening. We hear them, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Item H, without objection from my colleagues, I will read the treasurer's reports, item H. 1 through 4 altogether. H. 1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of October 18th, 2017, as sent to the board under separate cover. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of September, 2017, bank reconciliation, general fund, financial summary report, and financial report by fund as sent to the board under separate cover. Three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of September, 2017. The total, including payroll, is $4,436,771.76. And four, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the five-year forecast for the school year 2017-2018 as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion to approve items H. 1 through 4?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Any discussion? Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. That item passes 5-0. Next is action items, I. 1 through 3. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read items 1 through 3 together as consent agenda. Items 1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts certificated license, personnel, and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O.R.C. background checks. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O.R.C. background checks. And three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O.R.C. background checks. Do I have a motion to accept items I. 1 through 3?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solera. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Hearing none. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Ed Stain.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And that item passes 4 and 1 abstention. Next is J. 1 through 4. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read items J. 1 through 4 together as a consent agenda. Items J. 1... Items J1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education confirms the reappointment of Mr. Walter Hoffman to the position of trustee for the Twinsburg Public Library for the term of January 1, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2024, per the attached exhibit. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School cross-country team to travel to Hebron, Ohio for the OHSAA Cross-Country State Championship meet November 3rd, 2017, and returning on November 4th, 2017. The cost of this trip is being paid by the Twinsburg Athletic Department with financial assistance from the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters as sent to the board under separate cover. Three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the purchase of computers from CDW-GLLC 200 North Milwaukee Avenue, Vernon Hills, Illinois, 60061, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars and three hundred and seventy-seven, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. And four, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education, in accordance with board policy, 29211, acknowledge the following district support organizations: Samuel L. Bissell Elementary School Parent Teacher Association, George G. Dodge Intermediate School Parent Teacher Association, Wilcox Primary School Parent Teacher Association, R.B. Chamberlain, and Twinsburg High School Parent Teacher Association, Twinsburg City School District Parent Teacher Association, and Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, Twinsburg Band Boosters, and Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters. Do I have a motion to approve Items J1 through 4?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solera. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Discussion.
Just quickly, congratulations to our students who are going to state. I mean, they've had an incredible season, and best of luck this weekend. I can't wait to hear about their success, because either way, they've been successful so far, and we should all be proud of them.
And I'd also like to, I know Mr. Hoffman is not here, but I would like to thank him for his continued service as a position of trustee for the Twinsburg Public Library. Mr. Hoffman has done a lot for the community that he lives in, but also with respect to supporting Twinsburg schools, so I appreciate his willingness to continue doing that. Any other comments?
Just as we always do, people are like, "Well, why is our library item on our agenda?" The library is not a fiduciary body with respect to taxing, so it runs through the school board, so that's why you see this on our agenda. We have to just read it and approve it based on their recommendation, so, for those wondering why there's a library item on the school board agenda.
Right. Okay. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. That item passes 5-0. Next is miscellaneous. Have any remarks for miscellaneous? Okay. So, we do have a need to enter into executive session, so that the board will enter into executive session at 9:55 to discuss employment, discipline, and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education policy 0166A. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Solera. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terrell Waldron. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. We will enter into executive session. I think that there's a need to reconvene publicly. Thank you for attending this evening's board meeting.